Ready to go, Mayor. Thank you.
I haven't got any messages. Okay, well, we're three minutes late starting, so we're ready? Okay, call the meeting to order. Sorry, guys. Why do you have a gavel? There we go. Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Attendance at the start of the meeting is... Is Natalie with us? Okay, so she did say she'd be a bit late. So in chambers, we have Counselor Killick, Counselor Mackay, Counselor Vermansky, and Counselor Broadhead. And I see Counselor Hughes online, so you guys will just watch for Counselor Jolly to show up and record her at that time. Perfect. All right, I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Thank you, Counselor Mackay.
That the June 7th, 2022 agenda be adopted as presented.
Thank you for that. Call for the vote. Voting is closed and passes unanimously. Perfect. All right, first thing on our agenda, as always, is presentations, delegations, and announcements. And we have a couple registered speakers here today. First is a familiar face, Leah Congsward. She's Executive Director of the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance, and she's here to give us a progress report on the alliance. So welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First of all, I just wanted to point out that I did leave copies of our book on your tables.
I think I have about six copies of this, so if you want, you can give it to someone else, but it's beautiful.
I know. Some of you, it's your second or sometimes third copy, but please pass it on to your favorite residents or somebody that you love. It really is, I wanted the new councilors to receive them. And I've left actually a whole box with Led Services.
Okay.
So, and just a reminder is that if you guys have any need for books, such as if you're giving out an award, like an environmental award or a cultural award, and you want a book as kind of one of the gifts, just give me a call, and I can provide you the books for free.
Perfect.
Because the best way to make change is to get people informed. And we find that our book is a wonderful introduction for everybody in terms of what is a watershed, where do we live, that sort of thing. So with that, thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me here today. It's my annual update to you about the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance and the work of the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance. Next one. So what I'm going to cover today in my 10 minutes, and hopefully 11 if I go over, is just a bit of a big picture, like who are we? Like, what is the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance? How did the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance get to be formed? And then a little bit about what we do. And I'm going to focus a lot on the Sturgeon River Watershed because they've done a lot of work in the last four or five years, and I want to share that with you. So the first thing I want to do is say who we are. So Sean, the next one. And who the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance is is really directly connected with the Provincial Water for Life Strategy. This strategy was adopted in 2003 and has actually stood the test of time. This is one of the few provincial strategies that are still strong and going strong. And its main goals are safe, secure drinking water, healthy aquatic ecosystems, and reliable water supplies for a sustainable economy. And this strategy, I think one of the reasons it survived so long is that the government did something very differently when they formed this strategy. Rather than create like another department within the government or assign it to a group of people within the government, they actually gave the control of this strategy out to the people of Alberta. So there's four partners that actually moved the Water for Life Strategy forward. Of course, the government of Alberta, they are accountable and responsible for it. But there's three other organizations, including North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance. There's the provincial body, which is the Alberta Water Council. And some of you might have heard that they have done quite a few like provincial-wide studies, a lot on policy that the government could adopt or on state of, like how is the state of lakes in the province? They again, they're a nonprofit, Arms Link. They have a board of 23 different sectors, including urban municipalities. And they again, deal with the provincial-wide items. The second partner is Watershed Planning and Advisory Councils. And that's a long word. We usually get called W-PACs. And those are the regional water groups for each of the major rivers in Alberta. So North Saskatchewan obviously is for the North Saskatchewan River and its entire watershed. But there's another 10 W-PACs in the province, all the way from the Peace in the north down to the Milk in the south. And then lastly, but probably even just most importantly, is our watershed stewardship groups, which are those local groups who are volunteers, who really care about their water body or their issues. So Blass is an example of a watershed stewardship group. And there's plenty within the North Saskatchewan watershed. There's groups around the Wabhaman Lake, around Lake Lac Saint-Anne and Isle Lake, even small lakes like Hubble's Lakes. And we're fortunate, a lot of watersheds don't have these groups, but we have a really healthy group. So, next one, Sean. So for the Water for Life, the province really gave W-PACs four responsibilities. And we're convener collaborators, which is really just a very long words for saying we bring people together. So we bring collaborative partnerships together, like the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance. When stakeholders within our watershed identify an issue and they ask for our help, we go, we help, we facilitate, we get grants, we make sure that they succeed in what they want to do. We're also around planning and policy, so that's not only provincial policy, but that's municipal policy as well. We do monitoring and reporting where we can. Of course, the province is responsible for long-term monitoring of water quality, but we do a lot of local water quality monitoring. And then lastly, but not leastly, is education and outreach. They really rely on us to know our regions, know our stakeholders, and what the issues are. So just to give you an idea, so the North Saskatchewan Watershed, that's this colorful jigsaw puzzle on your screen here, is about 57,000 square kilometers large, which is larger than West Virginia and many states, I just found out because somebody was comparing it for me. And so how do we deal with a watershed that's this big? It also has over 1.5 million people, 12 subwatersheds. And you'll be a little bit scared here, but I deal with 81 municipalities on a day-to-day basis, so that's a lot. So how do we do it? One bit at a time. We work with our subwatersheds. So as I mentioned, there's 12 subwatersheds. And some of them are streaming for us to help them. And Sturgeon was one of them. So way back in the early 2000s, St. Albert and a bunch of other municipalities were like, we're worried about the Sturgeon, we want to do something about the Sturgeon. And we started working with kind of the grassroots groups to form the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance. There's two other groups that we also do this with, our Headwaters Alliance, which is actually two subwatersheds, and our Vermillion Watershed, which is out in the east. And that's not to say the other subwatersheds, you know, don't have issues or concerns. It's just we haven't been approached about them or wanting to work with us. Now saying that, I also wanted to just maybe back up a little bit and remind the council is that the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance also really works on your drinking water and your wastewater. So we are part of provincial committees, such as the North Saskatchewan Surface Water Quality Framework, which is just rolling out now, and working with the province in making sure that the parameters to ensure safe drinking water for yourselves and over 2 million people who use the North Saskatchewan River for drinking water is maintained or improved. That is a legal water quality objective, maintained or improved. As well, we work a lot with the Alberta Capital Region Wastewater Commission. As the population grows in Capital Region, there's going to be more and more wastewater. Does the North Saskatchewan have the capacity to take more? And that's a big question, because we not only have the Capital Region wastewater, we have Gold Bar, we have all the stormwater from Edmonton, we have the industrial effluent from the industrial heartland area. So we've been working for 10 years and trying to quantify and determine when do we have to stop putting wastewater into the North Saskatchewan at what point. And of course, there's a lot of things that you can do in terms of improved treatment and minimizing runoff, that sort of thing. But I just wanted you to remember as well, besides just the Sturgeon watershed, we look after the entire watershed. Next, Sean. So with that, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance. Okay, and the next one. So the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance. Who is it? What do we do? So it actually includes 12 municipalities that are reflective or parts of in the Sturgeon River watershed, as well as First Nations communities and some non-governmental organizations, including Bless, and of course, the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance. This group was formed in around 2014 and really worked collaboratively on watershed or water issues. Next slide. So just to give you a bit of a scan, this is the watershed. This is Sturgeon River watershed. So you have to remember is that as much as we talk about the Sturgeon River, what's more important is all of the land that drains into the river. So the river is just, it's the name. So there's a lot of creeks, there's tributaries, there's Carrot Creek, Adam Creek, there's River Cobar, there is Little Egg Creek. There's also lakes, Isle Lake, Lac Saint Anne. There's tiny, tiny, tiny lake at the very beginning of watershed called Hoopla Lake, which is more of a slough than a lake. So this encompasses around 3,300 square kilometers. Next slide. So a watershed management plan. So in 2020, after five years' worth of work, the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance created a watershed management plan. And why is this important? Well, what it does is it takes the stakeholders around the table, which include a steering committee of elected officials. And then there is a technical advisory committee, which is technically municipal staff where possible, and then technical experts from whether it's from Alberta Environment, from our group, or even volunteers that participate in that. It's a watershed approach. Again, water doesn't care whether it is Sturgeon County or City of St. Albert or City of Edmonton. So it looks at water from a watershed basis. It has clear goals and performance measures that are defined by you. So North Saskatchewan Watershed doesn't come in and say, this is what you need to view for goals and objectives. We might give, you know, examples of other plans or say, look, we've identified this issue, what do you guys think? So these goals and the actions are all defined by the people sitting at the table. It's also a voluntary document. So we as the W-PAC do not have any regulatory authority. What we do is we bring people together who care about the same thing.
Leah, there's about 30 seconds left.
Oh my gosh, okay. And we make it happen. So, next slide. So really, what the six outcomes of our, in the plan, are around planning and policies, which are important. Safe, secure drinking water, healthy aquatic ecosystems, reliable water supplies, wise land use, which is where you guys come in as the land authorities, and local and regional initiatives. Okay, Sean, we might skip through. Okay, no, let's stick with this one. So the plan is for 10 years, which is very ambitious, but it is, you know, more of on a natural or an environmental scale. But what the steering committee decided was on three priorities. North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance applied for a grant on your behalf. We received $200,000. And in the last five years, we've got over $800,000 for this group on grants. Excellent. And these are the priorities. So I'll just let you read through the slides. One of the interesting ones is water quality. So we're actually monitoring the water quality within the Sturgeon and the tributaries as well. Next one. And then just to wind up, again, I'm going to municipalities because a lot of the officials are new. So you'd be amazed when I go to 50-plus municipalities, a lot of the officials are new. And so I just want to impress upon them about why you want to continue participating with us. Usually when I say I've brought in, you know, a million, well, $3.5 million worth of grants in five years for our municipalities, that usually ends the deal right there. But there's a lot of other pluses to it. And the last slide.
All right.
And then I'm open to any questions. I did want to say a big thank you to both Councillor Killick and Councillor Vermansky, who are not only members on the Sturgeon River Watershed Alliance, but also members of the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance Board, which is 20, 20 elected members.
Awesome. All right, when we do have questions, so Councillor Broadhead's first up.
Well, thank you, Leah. It's great to see you again, and thanks for the presentation. I'm always intrigued by the Sturgeon and then upriver to the, to the North Saskatchewan. Couple of questions. Would you consider this year a normal year in terms, it just seems like the rivers are low?
Good question. I get this a lot, right? So last year was the lowest recorded levels ever for Sturgeon River, and the year before was the highest.
Yeah.
Right? This year, it looks like it's typical. Now, again, that can all change because our river is so dependent on rain. So if we all of a sudden have two months of rain, the levels can change. But right now, it seems to be on a normal.
Okay, fair enough. One of the things that, that I've always heard impact, not only the water flows of the Sturgeon, but also the water quality is, is the users along the river. And, and does the North Saskatchewan watershed and the Sturgeon Watershed Alliance, do you have any impact on water use agreements or those who can draw water out of the river?
Great question again. So, no, we, we don't. So the province isn't in charge of water allocations. But it was a key issue brought up by the steering committee and elected officials was water allocations in the Sturgeon. So we actually have a subgroup on water quantity. And we've had two meetings so far with the province and the license approval people about what can we do to manage allocations in the Sturgeon, especially if we're going to do more intensive agriculture. So the Regional Agricultural Master Plan that came out from the EMRB recently talked a lot about intensifying agriculture, and that can mean irrigation. So we want to try to get ahead of that. So we do have a working group with them. We'll have to keep you posted. This is something that's going to take years to address because it is quite an old system, but we are looking at.
You're speaking to it, or at least you're interested in it, right? And now, if you get a license, is there any, do you get a license for X number of liters per day? Or how does that work? And, and is it measured at all?
No questions, Councillor Broadhead. Yes, so you do get a license for a certain amount of water, and it's usually in cubic meters. But agricultural landowners are given a certain amount of water without a license. So if you add up all the licenses, it's a huge amount of water. But what we really want to know is how much of that is used? So every, you know, farm might have a license, but they might not use it. And no, nobody keeps track of it.
Okay.
So major approval holders, such as say a gravel pit operation or say City of St. Albert, you know, because you do have groundwater wells that you use, will have to report it. But not everybody does, and that's the hard part. So is it over allocated or is it not?
Well, we're proud of our river, and it means a lot to our community. So thanks for the work that you do. And thank you, Councillor Killick and Councillor Vermansky for being part of it. Thank you. That's good for me, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, Wes. Councillor Killick.
I don't really have any questions. I just would like to point out, Leah was being very modest that she didn't mention her retirement. And I'd like to just thank her for her many years of service on the Watershed Committee and all the guidance and support and really just vision and, and personal commitment, really, Leah. It's personal commitment. Surely you're interested in our watershed, and that shows in every meeting we've attended and every agenda that's been sent out and every, every piece of the discussion we've had. So really appreciate your leadership and, and also appreciate that you'll, you'll be sticking around for another month or so to transition over to, to the new head. So really appreciate that and, and wish you the best in whatever, whatever water-related activities you might take forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Killick. Yes, so I am retiring at the end of this month. But many of you know, I'm from St. Albert, so I will still be here and probably working on something related to the river or the importance.
And we do have volunteer positions open.
I was gonna say, there's an environmental advisory committee that might need some help, expertise. I see no more questions. Thank you for coming. I don't think this has ever occurred.
I come out every year.
Pardon?
I come out every year.
Do you, every year?
Every year.
Not every year, every term?
Yeah, no, every year. I come every year. I go to 50, 50 municipalities every year.
Wow, how do you do that?
I do a lot of driving.
Yeah, exactly.
I do a lot of driving. I was just at Parkland this morning and Stony Plain yesterday. A few weeks ago, I was at Village of Holden. I go to every place. So Village of Holden has about 250 people.
Well, this wasn't too far of a drive for you then?
No, it's meant, you know, when I said, you heard me say, our river, right? So this is my neighborhood, this is my community.
Well, I know you and Megan used to canoe it every year to just check out its health.
Yep. They still, they still do, do the annual boat trip on the river.
That's awesome. Well, you know that St. Albert's, I would, I would speak for most people, we're committed to that river. It's an important piece of who we are. We're lucky to have it. There's lots of municipalities that have no water association, and so we try to take care of it. And having two councillors sit there is important. And of course, Councillor Hanson chaired it, I think, didn't she, last term?
She was our vice chair.
Vice chair, yeah.
And she was, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And I still hear from her as well. So we won an Emerald Award last week. So I did get a, you know, a thumbs up from you, Mary Herron, to the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance won an Emerald Award last year and this year.
Good.
So you guys, it's you guys who do the great work. We just help facilitate it. So congratulations to you guys.
Well, you're a great resource for us, so thank you. Enjoy your retirement.
Yes, thanks.
All right. Our next presenter is virtual, I believe. Great. Yes, I'm seeing some nods. Yes, there it is. We have Brian Turpin, who is the President of Alberta Police-Based Victim Services Association, and Shelley, oh, I'm not good. De Tramater, Program Manager with St. Albert Victim Services. So glad you guys are both here. You guys have five minutes, but honestly, there's two of you. So if you need a little bit extra time, we can do that. Brian, it was good, it's good to see you. We ran into each other at the police governance, and I'm so glad you are taking the time to come and talk to us about Alberta Provincial Victim Services. So you can start whenever you're ready.
Okay, so everybody can hear me, okay? Can see me? Okay. Sorry.
Start whenever you're ready, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, so I just want to say thank you to your worship, Mayor, and to councillors for inviting us today. And like Cathy said, it was great to meet her at, at the Alberta Governance, the Police Governance Committee, AGM, held in beautiful city of St. Albert back a few weeks ago, where I spoke on victim services in Alberta. And of course, Shelley is with me today. And I think you're all familiar with Shelley being your local program manager in St. Albert. Shelley is doing a great job of coordinating the victim services work in your city of St. Albert. So I'm going to try to be as brief as I can because I'm guessing you're probably going to have a few questions for us at the end. But I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview, kind of a before, a current and, and perspective on what's to come in the future. So I'm the current provincial president of the Alberta Police-Based Victim Services Association. We're a professional association accredited in Alberta, representing 72 police-based victim service units, including the one, of course, in St. Albert that Shelley heads up. So we provide mentorship, education, and training to the various VSU units and operate as a professional association with, with the local units. So I'm going to start off with a document. And everything I say here today, feel free to email me or to contact me. Shelley has my contact information. I can provide additional information for you, documentation, if you're interested in reading up on some of the things I'm going to touch on very briefly today. But I'm going to start off with the 2016 Auditor General's Report on the Department of Justice in Alberta and the section on victim services. So the way we are structured, funding for victim services in Alberta, back in the 1990s, a fund was set up called the Victims of Crime Fund. And that was, has its own revenue stream, comes from, from surcharges on fines. And 85% of that revenue comes from traffic surcharges. So I'm guessing that there's a few people sitting around on Zoom or in this room today that have contributed to that fund over the years, maybe. If so, I want to thank you. Anyways, the Auditor General reported in 2016, that fund had grown to $56 million surplus. And the government was criticized. That document's still out there and has been unanswered to. The government was criticized for not properly funding victim services units and victim service work in Alberta. And, and just, just to break it down in half, half of that fund, historically, they brought in 47 million and they expanded 44 million, which is why the surplus grew. The fund does two things. It offers a program to victims of crime called Financial Benefits, which is an allotment of financial resource to help a victim rebuild their life somewhat. The other, the other portion of the fund is to finance the victim services work that's done with, like Shelley's unit or my unit, that provides service to victims of crime in Alberta and, and other peripheral agencies that also offer that. So anyways, starting off with that Auditor General's Report, $56 million surplus. Government was criticized for not spending it where it should have been spent. Back then, I met with Kathleen Ganley, the Finance Minister, a number of times to address that, to look at. The result that the NDP came up with at the time was to, we, the way the victim service units are financed, are financed through grants, which is another contention we have. We do the same work that we did last year and the year before, but yet we're forced into this cut-and-paste grant process. And all the province, except for the City of Edmonton and Alberta, were capped off at $150,000, no matter what the population or the geographical area they were serving, which is a contention, very, very underfunded. Most of the VSUs have to fundraise or rely on the generosity of the municipalities to.
Brian, that bell rang was your 30-second warning, so I don't, I don't know how much longer you have.
Okay, so anyways, I'll move, I'll move forward to three main points that now we want to, we've been going around doing some education across the province with various municipalities. I've spoke to the urban and the rural municipalities, the Alberta Chiefs of Police, Commanding Officer K Division. The, the bottom line is that we're asking the government to really have a close look at properly, sustainably funding victim services in Alberta and to look at the damage that's been done from Bill 16 with the Financial Benefits Program. Victims are receiving little to nothing as compared in the past. So change is coming. The province says that they are looking at changing the programs that they have right now and the work that's being done with victims. And all we're asking, I met with Minister Shandrol last week, and our ask is to please carefully look at the change that you're going to implement. Is it in the best interest of victims? So basically, it's, it's a little bit of an education for the municipalities such as yours as to what's going to happen, watching what is going to be announced, and is it in the best interest? One of the things that concern us is our Premier Kenny, in the comments on the throne speech, mentioned regionalization. Our question is, how big is that going to be? What's proposed in regionalization? Right now, they're community-driven. You're St. Albert, VSU is made up of volunteers. So I'll finish up right there and maybe take a couple quick questions. And then feel free, if anybody wishes to contact me for further information.
All right. Is there anyone who has any questions? I'm gonna, I'm gonna start. And Shelley, you can jump in with any answers too if you want, but maybe. So the status right now of that fund, are they, are they expanding the scope of what it's used for?
Yes, Mayor. What happened with Bill 16 that was introduced in the House by Minister, former Minister Doug Schweitzer, was that the protected firewall that protected that fund from using it in general, general revenue because it had, it was created with its own stream of funding, never to be tied to the economic climate of the day, and it was to be used for victims only. Bill 16 changed that. And they came back and they said, now, it's not protected anymore. Basically, government can delegate it to wherever they want to. And the, the intention at, at the time, back a year ago in June, was that they were going to hire more police officers, crown prosecutors, and put in a cash injection into the drug courts in Alberta.
And has that been realized? Is that what they've done? Do you know?
I don't see evidence of it across this province. I don't see an increase in police. And if you were watching the news about a month and a half ago, the crown prosecutors in Alberta had threatened to walk off the job. So I don't see where they put the. So I don't see where they put the, and just a footnote, the fifty-six million dollars that I spoke of in 2016 was seventy-four million when Bill sixteen, when Bill sixteen was introduced in the House. It had grown to seventy-four million. Sad part was that the VSU units, the, our association had done a survey, where it would cost less than five million dollars to properly fund the victim service units across the province. What, seventy-four, seventy-four million is gone.
So, and, and so you said a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for every municipality regardless of size? And that's still, that's what St. Albert would receive?
The only two, the only two exceptions were the cities, which Calgary and Edmonton were getting, the two major cities, sorry. Calgary and Edmonton were getting three hundred thousand. Kathleen Ganley's government doubled the grant caps to just five cities. So she included Grand Prairie and Fort McMurray along with Edmonton, Calgary and Lethbridge. And she doubled the caps from a hundred and fifty to three hundred and from three hundred to six hundred. But St. Albert and all the other rural VSUs across the province and the other cities were left at a hundred and fifty thousand. And folks like Shelley are forced to fundraise for probably more than fifty percent of their budget, or to rely on the generosity of, of the municipality councils like yourself.
So five cities. So Medicine Hat was not part of that?
I believe, it was Edmonton, Calgary, Grand Prairie, yes, Medicine Hat and, and Lethbridge. Those were the five cities that were included. Air surgery was very upset and spoke vocally in the media about not being included in that grant increase. It was not what we asked for. We asked for a concept of focused funding, which is an accepted accounting principle, where you go in, you present a budget, you back it up with facts and stats. Here's your crime rates, here's your referral rates, here's the geography you cover. Here's what we need to offer service to victims of crime. That was not entertained. The focused funding model was not entertained. It was, let's just double the caps.
Sure, with Tasman could probably use more money as, as such a high crime rate. I've got more questions, but I'll go to you, councillor Mackay.
Yeah, and I guess it's Shelley. Thanks, Brian. I, councillor Mackay, we've talked many times, and I was on the Safe and Healthy Communities with Alberta municipalities, plus I'm also on the policing community, so I've heard you speak a couple of times, and I'm also very familiar with some of our challenges. But specifically to Shelley, Shelley, the impacts I know caused by COVID had on the operations of victim service units all across Alberta, in particularly not being able to go out and actually, you know, be in person, and that had associated drawdown on our volunteers. Have we managed to increase the number of volunteers? Are we getting the same number of volunteers that we had before? Or are we still struggling to get those individuals back?
That's a really good question. In fact, we have struggled to get new advocates. We, we have brought on three new individuals, but you know, there's a cost to that. There's advertising. You know, there's time spent in doing that marketing component. So by the time we get the new people in, we've spent a lot of money in trying to obtain those volunteers. And remember, this isn't the same type of volunteerism in which you go out, you, you don't, you know, you go into your community and do something wonderful and you're, you know, you can just show up at your volunteer job and, and there's people there to guide you. There's training involved in this. There's security clearances involved in this. It's very intimidating for the average person to come in and volunteer for victim services. It is a very huge commitment, and that really puts people off. And one of the things Brian talked about was reduced, you know, funding, and that came about with our training. We could, well, now we can only apply for a thousand dollars worth of training. So that used to be a tool to entice people to come in and volunteer, because we could highlight some of the fantastic training that we were able to do over the years. Now I can't do that. I haven't, I'm really, my tools and my resources are, are being taken away more and more through the reduction of funds. And the reduction of time being utilized on the program now being used to try and find, you know, other ways to market fundraising, you know, those types of things. So we're, we're losing out, we're losing our footing here, and it's an ongoing struggle for sure. But we have, you know, the upside is, we do have three brand-new volunteers come on, and they've been highly committed. They understood the process. We've tried to keep them engaged right from the get-go. It takes months to get a security clearance, a very long time, so you have to keep them engaged in that process. And we've worked really hard to do that. So far, no one's quit. That's a good sign.
And then following up on that, and I appreciate that, because I mean, we found that COVID really had a drain, because of course, a number of, you know, the families had to stay together. There was kind of different types of crime, or it highlighted maybe, or focused on different types of disorder and, and social impact. And that had an impact on, on our residents. But then, does that translate to the types of calls that the advocates are going to? Or have you seen a rise in specifically mental health calls or domestic violence calls that require that a special type of advocate or more involvement in the advocates?
Yeah, so first and foremost, the types of crime types that we've received that have increased are domestic violence, mental health and sexual assault, period. That is just, we've seen a huge upswing in those three over the past two and a half years, three years. And that definitely impacts the volunteerism, because, you know, those are complex clients. There's layers and layers of trauma that's occurring in the majority of these files. And there's layers of layers of intervention from other organizations, not just within the city of St. Albert, but within other areas of the province, because they may be coming from another town or community, or here visiting or, or whatever. It's, it's amazing, the people that we do deal with that actually don't live in St. Albert. But it has, it's had a huge impact on our advocates and trying to ensure that they are trained, qualified, skilled, to be going out and working with some of the referrals that we do receive. And ensuring that they're still staying within their scope of practice, so that we're not causing any harm to our volunteers.
Anyways, thank you very much, Shelley and Brian, for all you do and advocate on behalf of not only victims of crime, but also the advocates as well. I appreciate it very much, so.
Thank you, councillor.
Okay. Councillor Brumansky.
Thank you again to Brian and Shelley, rather through the mayor. I just, you know, I know the work that you do is so great, and, and you're, you're working with less funding, and I appreciate all the efforts in fundraising. And what is the dollar amount that you would need in your, in your service to function at your best in your estimation? Like, how much fundraising do you need to accomplish a year?
Councillor, I can answer that on, on a provincial level. I'm sure Shelley can answer it on a local St. Albert, St. Albert level. But on a provincial level, we're finding that it's, it's an extreme mushrooming effect of fundraising has now domineered almost fifty percent of the majority of the VSU, police-based VSUs across the province. And that, and that's, that's due in part to a lot of cuts. Shelley alluded to the thousand-dollar cut. That, that equates to anywhere from five thousand to thirty-seven thousand dollars in some of the VSUs, taken away from their hundred and fifty thousand, where the government has said, you will only get a thousand dollars for training, no matter how big your VSU is, no matter how many volunteers you're going to train or how many staff. You cannot send these people out to these high-trauma call to a violent sexual assault at 2:00 AM in the morning in the hospital without proper training. And to have proper training, it costs. So the government has cut us to the bone and continues to cut. Even though the money is there in separate stream of funding, that's the disheartening part about it, is that that fund was for victims.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't know, Shelley, if you want to maybe answer that from the St. Albert perspective? So you get a hundred and fifty from the province. Remind us how much you get from the city and then how much you fundraise?
Yeah, so we get sixty-six, eight fifty we received last year from the city of St. Albert. And this year, we fundraised, I want to, just off the top, so far, I think over five thousand dollars. Now, that's not a lot, but for us in this unit, that, that actually is a fair amount. And, you know, we do have our fundraising plan. We've put it into effect this year. And so, you know, moving forward, we're hoping we can raise another five thousand dollars. But again, it, it, what happens is, I'm not complaining about fundraising. You know, I've been in nonprofit world for years. I understand it's part of the business. But at the end of the day, it's taking away from our operational resources, and that becomes so challenging. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a challenge either way.
Right. I have had some initial conversations with Ryan over at the RCMP or Detachment Commander about a regimental ball to raise funds for victim services. So I think he's, he might be calling you to.
Okay.
So one final question, I guess it goes to you, Brian, is, I'm going to put on my President of Alberta Municipalities hat. Is there something, has there been resolutions coming out of our organization? And, and is there something more we should be doing? I'm seeing a nod from councillor Mackay. See, there's a resolution? Yeah?
Yeah, I think that we had put forward a resolution around sporting Alberta-based victim services programs. And it came on the floor last year in Edmonton. I'm not sure, Brian, can you confirm that?
Yes, actually, there was a resolution put forward, and it was around addressing sustainable funding for the victim service units, so they are not forced to fundraise, because the money was there to do it. And the important part is that it's never been taxpayers' dollars. That stream of funding is from surcharges. So, so, you know, this is what we've been trying to pressure government to realize, properly and adequately fund the victim service units. And it's a pittance of the surplus that had existed of the seventy-four million that was taken away. So, you know, and, and to this day, we continue to see cuts. So that's, that's the, I guess, the crux of the whole presentation, is that we continue to urge and to employer, employer government to address the deficiency of funding for victim service units when the money exists and it's there in a surplus. And, and it should be funded. I don't think it should fall back on municipalities, personally. I think if, if you're looking at, and that was part of one of the resolutions from one of the municipal meetings, I think it was AUMA, I'm not sure, but was that, why should we be forced to subsidize the victim service units when the mechanism was there and the funding was there to properly fund them? But government is moving on to that funding. So why should it be downloaded again to municipalities? Much like they're trying to do with policing.
All right, I will keep my eye on it and see what we can do. All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much for listening to us. We really appreciate it, and I wish you all a great day. Thanks.
All right. I just actually got a text from Carrie saying it's expired, so twenty eighteen.
Well, we can maybe bring it back and put it on. Is it too late for resolution?
It's probably too late, but.
Or we can put a special resolution. I mean, let's hope we don't have to, Brian. I mean, that's, there's lots of things potentially happening in the next year, but, but I think maybe it's something that maybe we should put on as a special resolution.
I think, you know, the most important thing would be to keep your eye open, because within the next month, you're going to see the announcement, and you're going to be able to digest it yourselves and see what impact it's going to have on your local community in St. Albert. And, and look at what does that look like for the victims of your city? And I think at that time, it will probably be most beneficial for municipalities to speak out, to say, you know, we, we think this is positive, or we see some negative aspects in this, and this is not progression, but it is regression. So, so yeah, I, I think over the next coming weeks, it'll be vitally important to, to monitor that announcement and look at the details of what's, what's enclosed inside of it.
All right, Brian, if you could maybe, in case I missed the announcement, email me any, anything.
I will.
That would be perfect.
I will. I will keep, I will keep you in the loop. And again, thank you, Mayor. It was nice to meet you last month. And thank you councillors for entertaining us today.
Perfect. Thank you so much for coming.
Take care.
Next on our presentation, so we have a lot of presentations today. We have Brian Bettis and Todd Worrell from TELUS on that update on Pure Fiber. How are you guys?
Great, how are you?
Good, thanks for waiting.
Oh, our pleasure, our pleasure. Do we have our material up by chance? So maybe just while we're, while we're waiting for material, introductions, so I think kind of most of you, but I'm Brian Bettis, and I'm the general manager for Northern Alberta at TELUS. And with me, I've got Todd Worrell, who is going to be stepping in. So this is a bit of a handshake session. So I'm, I'm going to pursue some other opportunities in TELUS on a different portfolio. And Todd is currently the sitting GM for Edmonton, and we're going to absorb the Edmonton Capital Region into the Edmonton portfolio. And so Todd will, will be here as well.
Awesome. Okay, I see your slides up, so we can start your five minutes, whatever you're ready.
Perfect. Sorry, five minutes, did you say?
Yeah, if you can. It's supposed to be, obviously, I've been giving everybody a little extra time.
This might be a five-minute, like, like maybe the five minutes before me was, but we, we certainly work toward an agenda if you.
I'm sure, you know what, there'll be lots of questions at the end.
Perfect, okay. So, so thanks again for the time. We thought it prudent, given that we've now been in the process of building fiber within St. Albert for the better part of four years, to come back and do an update with respect on the clock on the screen, that's nice, to do an update in terms of where we're at from progress report and how we're doing. But I thought before we do that, if I could just get to the next slide to start, that'd be great. We do a little bit of just a reminder that TELUS and, and our genesis as an organization stems from that of Edcel and AGT, Alberta Telephone Services. And so as an organization and as a company, we represent a series of, of employees and retirees, just on the next slide, that make up a significant portion of residents here in St. Albert, over four hundred and seventy active team members in, in St. Albert that live, work and serve here. And from a TELUS lens, we've got key priorities on focusing Alberta around bridging socioeconomic and geographical digital divides, with connectivity as a real driver for active connectivity for, you know, education, health. There's huge capabilities, smart city, that we'll talk about on a larger basis in the future. But it's to really help us to continue to innovate and build on those communities, digitally transform education. And then beyond that, if future-proof, not only the urban environment, but also the capabilities to invest in agriculture and in the rural areas as well. So if you go to the next slide, we can talk just a little bit about, as I mentioned, four hundred and seventy team members here in St. Albert, over six thousand total in the province with eighty-five hundred retirees. And every year, we contribute over two and a half million hours of community service, because we, we, as a, as an organization, believe that philanthropy is a real significant outcome in terms of giving in the communities where we live, work and serve. And in Alberta, a hundred and forty-five million total giving to charitable organizations. So that looks like social profits, nonprofits across the organization, and a significant number here in St. Albert trying to drive better outcomes locally. In the spirit of time, we'll keep going, as a reminder, we, in the province, have invested fifty-one billion dollars to date, so that's since 2000. We just recently announced that we're going to be investing another seventeen billion over the next five years. And, you know, just worth calling out that we contribute over a billion dollars annually in taxes to the province of Alberta, with the intention of, you know, continuing to invest heavily in the province to drive outcomes. And as a reminder, further, a hundred million of that, of those multiple billions is the fiber built here in St. Albert that we've been underway with. So with that, I'll just quickly plug, I have to do this, because I don't think there's enough awareness to it on the next slide, our For Good programs, if you're not aware of them, might be helpful to know, given the previous conversations that we had around availability of services for, for people that are in underprivileged situations. We have our Mobility for Good program, which is free wireless service and devices to vulnerable youth aging out of government care and low-income seniors. That exists and, and continues to grow as a business. The Internet for Good program, which is focused primarily on low-income families who, whether that be students, persons with disabilities who are on age, to give them access to in-homes, high-speed internet services and computers. And then lastly, Health for Good, and, you know, we, we make significant movements in the health space, but it's primarily on bringing mobile health clinics to provide access to healthcare for residents. We actually have a scheduled appointment for the mobile health clinic in St. Albert in the next couple of months. So significant, you know, continued focus on the For Good side. And our belief is a good business and doing good are mutually inclusive, just as a portfolio view. So if we go to the next slide, we'll get a little bit into innovation, and I'm talking as fast as I possibly can to work through this time constraint. But we have, as, as you may recall, just a level set, when we started talking about investing in pure fiber in St. Albert, the goal was to deploy an underlay of state-of-the-art, fast, ultra-fast, future-proof network for the next fifty years capabilities, and then overlay 5G services that will give now the headway for ultra-fast cellular networks and effectively merge the two. And we've been ultra fast cellular networks and effectively merge the two. And we've been heavily on that path now for four years here in St. Albert. Uh, it's giving us now, uh, end state of getting to ninety five percent of homes and businesses, uh, that will have that five G service. And then to deploy additional five G capabilities on top that open up, you know, a significant number of operatives, smart city, green city, smart services that actually tie in well to the watershed, uh, conversation that started earlier. Uh, that's the ding of my bell and I've now finished my preemptive slide. So if I can move into the actual presentation, that'll be great. Uh, so.
And seriously, don't, don't panic, Brian.
Okay. Uh, so we, we can slow it down a bit. So, um, so now to get into the meat and potatoes a bit. Uh, we have been, uh, focused on building fiber here in the community for the last four years. And just for awareness, I think for council, uh, for the public, uh, we have a communication strategy that's fairly robust. We, we do that communication of letting people know that we're gonna be in their neighborhood being rather disruptive, as you may recall, or as you've seen. Uh, and, and in terms of, you know, direct mail, emails to customers, uh, targeted ads. You may see our signs, we're saying, hey, we're making a mess here, but we're gonna come clean it up later, uh, which we will discuss in just a bit. And then also include things like billboards, branding, all of our team members are very visible when they're out doing this work. Uh, logoed ID cards, the whole works. And I'll show you on the next slide a bit of what our map looks like for where we've built. So in all of the green area, you can see four years of work of building pure fiber facilities into, uh, the city of St. Albert. So, uh, now in the, uh, red area, that's what we have in flight for, uh, for twenty twenty two. These, these communities will be complete by the end of this year. And then the purple is future, future presumably meaning twenty twenty three, where we'd like to be complete, uh, on the build. But, uh, you know, your mileage may vary. Things that, as you may recall, will impact our ability to be complete at the end of next year. Things like early winter this year, if we see snow fly in that October timeframe may push it back a bit. Uh, we did try ambitiously, I might add, to build throughout the winter last year. Uh, I'm sure, uh, councillors have heard about the efforts of trying to build throughout the winter last year and leading to some suboptimal landscaping results, of which we are working to remediate post haste. Um, so we may probably, we probably won't do that again this year. Uh, but again, intending to get us to progress and complete this work. Uh, so, uh, just for, for awareness, we've now delivered over nine thousand premises that have been connected. Those are single family homes. Another, just over twenty three hundred multi dwelling unit tenant, single business, uh, buildings. And then a hundred and seventy three kilometer total directional drilling to get the facilities to the premises. And in, in St. Albert, our intention has been to be as least disruptive as we can possibly be. I mean, the work that we're doing is fairly disruptive by nature and, you know, we believe it's the price of progress, but our commitment is to try to get, get by as much of it as possible. Uh, and so doing the directional drilling as opposed to aerial facilities or, you know, even going on the ground in different ways is preferable here. But you can see, you know, just the, the level of diligence that's been done in terms of completing the work and we're kind of into the home stretch on, on this build. Um, I think we would be remiss on the next slide not to discuss, uh, restoration. So, um, we, we know and we continue to work locally with residents on restoration. I should mention that we specifically, when we came to St. Albert, we understand the value of, as a resident, we understand the value of of landscaping and, and just the value that's put on here. Uh, so we actually rebuilt our entire program around restoration prior to coming to St. Albert. And that would include things like hydro seeding, um, hydro seeding to specific grass type. Um, which is, you know, the spraying of, of quick application, uh, seeding capability and ensuring the right amount of seeds and moisture are done and then the follow up and diligence. We also have, uh, reinforced and bolstered our, our restoration crews. So that's crews of rags, shovels, seeds, topical treatments uh, that are out in yards and then routine checkups to, to make sure that we're doing absolute diligence on that. I should call out, and you can see some of the photos here in terms of, you know, before and then the transition to after. This build certainly has not been without incident. Uh, and, and I, we didn't expect it to be. Um, I, our belief is that it's not that something happens. Of course, we plan for something to, uh, to not happen, but in the event that you see incidents, it's how you respond. Uh, you may recall, council may recall when we, we hit the water line last year when we were doing our build work and our response in that regard was, you know, get every person a hotel room in, in the community. Make sure they all have, you know, meal vouchers and gift cards for dinner that evening and get this fixed. And we were able to fix it in about three hours with city coordination. Uh, and that's what we think good looks like in terms of responding to those types of situations.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up now, Brian, because I try to be fair and you've already gone over quite a bit. And so is there, is there, like, there's already questions?
We can get right to questions. That's totally fine.
You want to go straight to questions now?
Yeah, go ahead. That's totally great. Yeah.
Because I, I have a feeling the restoration question is gonna come up and timelines and dates. And I've already got councillor Broadhead ready to go. So go ahead, Wes.
Absolutely.
Uh, well, thank you for coming and, and presenting. It's, it's been an issue in our community, to be sure. Uh, both, uh, positive and and of course, the restoration thing has been a bit of a issue. Nonetheless, uh, my particular resident is in that area that is not done yet.
Yeah.
And I'm looking forward to the idea that fiber will eventually come to my resident. And I suspect in due course, that will happen. Uh, there's been a rumor out there that there's been flagging sort of determination to com- complete the city. Uh, what I hear you saying is that determination is there to finish off our community. Correct?
That's correct. And, and from early days of our announcement, our intention has been to build a ninety five percent of premises in, in the city proper. Uh, you hear me say ninety five and not a hundred. The reason for that is we can't force people to take our services.
Right.
Uh, or allow us to connect their premise. So, um, we worked about ninety five percent number, but that would include, you know, building effectively every neighborhood in, in the city proper. And, uh, of course, yours included.
Fair enough. Thank you. So my follow up question then is, St. Albert is just, uh, annexed, uh, significant additional area. What's your plan for, uh, the new area of St. Albert? It's certainly not urban densities there, but there are people out there. So.
Yeah. And, and so a, a, a very fair question. I'd say, one, um, we are aware of the annex. Uh, and the intention of building this network is to do a couple of things. So one, uh, you build a fiber, we call it a fiber ring effectively. But everything in the, in the fiber ring gets completed, which means that all the premises are there. And then by putting the facilities in place, you now decrease your cost of being able to move the facilities further down the path. Uh, and that would be our intention with the annex situation as well. Um, we, we tend to look at a couple of pieces around the economics of, of it and the return on that. Um, it's worth calling out that this is a generational investment. Like, we're, we're talking about a hundred million dollars and, you know, likely beyond fifteen years in terms of payback period for us. Uh, but we think it's the right thing to do and I think we'll look at the annexation, uh, in the same situation.
Okay, fair enough. My follow, uh, final question. New developments, uh, is it going to be your, uh, standard then to try and push fiber into every new development?
Yes. So part of the value of, and why we would do an update like this, I, I think it's really important to call this out. So we don't have to collaborate, uh, with municipality to do upgrades to our facilities, but we find that it works so much better when we do. Uh, that partnership and being able to work in concert together has been incredibly effective here. I'll call that out with administration and the city of St. Albert has been phenomenal to work with. And so, uh, for new developments, uh, we will be doing all new fiber, uh, facilities on a go forward basis. And that's the standard, by the way, for TELUS since twenty thirteen. So when we do our pure fiber program, it's about going back to the premises that were maybe not as part of that initial front and getting them all built to the fastest and most reliable internet service that exists on the planet today.
Thank you. Those are my questions, Madam Mayor, and thanks for coming.
Thank you. Council, I'm, I'm gonna go to a couple more questions here, but don't forget we have a public hearing at three o'clock, which is right now. So we need to keep our questions very tight because we have a public hearing that's been advertised. So councillor Killick?
Uh, very, very quick. Thanks for the presentation at one gig speed. Um, appreciate that.
Thank you.
The, yeah, question is really around, um, is there anything that St. Albert could do as council municipality that could partner with TELUS to speed this along, um, and get it, uh, to our residents sooner?
Yeah, I'm, it's a great question and a thoughtful one. And I might add, I think the presentation was a two and a half gig, uh, speed, not one gig speed. It was flying through there. Uh, so I, I, I think maybe it was, it was caught in the original, uh, my last question, but I think staff has been, administration has been incredible. Uh, the challenges and, and what has elongated our build plan have absolutely nothing to do with the city of St. Albert. It has to do a lot with the global supply chain challenges that we've seen uh, across our industry. And then when you compound that with labor issues to, of the skill set of people that are dead qualified to do this type of work, you have kind of a perfect storm. So, um, global supply chain, I'm sure everybody's tired of hearing that phrase. Um, but the equipment that we use to build the network is in very high demand across the world. And, you know, actually, we've, we've had a number of instances just over the last month where we've had labor ready to go to build and no facilities to actually install because of cargo ships being stuck at port or rail issues or like, and we've kind of, in, in Alberta had the perfect storm quantified because of the flooding that happened in, in the lower mainland where a lot of the, our stuff comes from port and then rail car into Edmonton. So I, you know, I think the short answer is no. Uh, we're very appreciative of the support we get from the city and I don't think there's anything council could do here, but we're dealing with a lot of the same challenges that most cities are in current state.
Just a follow up then, the, the map kind of showed, um, almost like seventy five percent coverage of, of St. Albert. Do you anticipate that it'll take us, uh, take TELUS till twenty twenty six to complete the coverage? Because that last quarter, you know, based on previous speed seems to be a little bit of a long, uh, cycle.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I, our, our goal would be to have everything complete by the end of next year. Uh, and that would be our aspirational goal. Certainly there will be things that come up that may be elongated, but uh, what I would envision is, is Mr. Worrell here in probably the spring of twenty twenty four giving an update to council and, and doing that diligence that we do around, you know, have this council believe that we've completed our commitment and done due diligence to remediation, restoration. We would not consider St. Albert complete until we have alignment from council that we've done as to our commitment. Uh, and so would, you know, be kind of in that window and we'll give any updates then.
Last one is on remediation. Who are you gonna call? Do we all know what that number is?
It's on our website. Who you call?
It is on the website. Yeah. And, and again, uh, we are doing spot checks all across the community and even the ones that get through, like, you know, the St. Albert Gazette has done some great work for us, even just identifying, you know, remediation opportunities too. So, you know, we're looking across, across the board to, uh, continue to do that.
We've got Jeff Nickel as our contact.
Jeff Nickel is the guy. Yes, that's correct.
I'd also point out that on our website, it does have the twenty twenty two update for the neighborhoods are going to. It'd be very helpful if we could put twenty three in there. So at least residents, because I know Kingswood and Deer Ridge is not on, on there either. So if you could put it twenty three to twenty four, even whatever long, so they know when it's coming.
Take that away and put that, that's a great path for sure.
Okay. Uh, and I see no more hands. So we're good. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Sorry, you're so rushed. I think they, they sent you an email that said five minutes, but maybe it wasn't highlighted enough. So.
That's okay. We're fine. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And councillor, we do have one more resident to speak. So we're gonna go to, uh, Matt. I think it's, it's, yeah, Matt Jirga. He's a resident and, um, what I think we can do is we can listen to his presentation, ask questions. Then we'll go to the public hearing and then anything business arising from Matt's presentation, we'll get to after the public hearing. So, uh, Matt, are you with us? I think I saw him logged in. Mr. Jirga, are you with us? He's online? He is online. Is he muted? Can you send him an un, request to unmute?
There you go. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can see you and hear you. Thank you. Sorry for the long wait.
No problem. Uh, thank you very much for, uh, thank you to, to, to Mayor Cathy and thank you for, uh, councils. Um, the reason why I'm here, I'm interested of putting solar panels, uh, uh, in my backyard. Uh, the first step I took, I contacted planning and engineering, uh, uh, city of St. Albert and was told that actually it is allowed only to put the solar panels, uh, on the, on the rooftops. Uh, I would like to put them in my backyard along my, uh, back fence. Um, and yeah, I was asked to, uh, to, to speak in the front of the councils and ask for amendment uh, bylaws, uh, in order to be able to, 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 to complete the installation on the, uh, racking on the ground, racking instead of the, uh, rooftop. So some of the advantages of, of installing a panel on the ground, uh, in my case, it's, uh, it's more affordable to mount them on the ground. Uh, I am electrician by trade. I could do installation after pulling, uh, permits. I could do installation myself. Whereas to putting, uh, on the two story house would be a little bit, uh, unsafe to do it. Um, another reason is, uh, there is no risk.
Second thing on his laptop, it's ringing through your phone?
Just, just one moment. Sorry. Um, um, another, um, another advantage is, I mean, there is a risk of damaging a roof, possible leaks and damages to rafters of the roof. If you, if you place them on, on the rooftop. Um, another thing would be it's easy access to the panels. Uh, the solar panels needs to be cleaned at least once a year. If I, again, place them on the top of the roof, they are out of the region. Um, it's, it'll be very expensive and unsafe to get up there and try to, to, to clean them. Um, again, down the road, if, if, you know, if I, if I would need to expand the, uh, installation, again, on the rooftop, there is, you know, limited amount of the space, whereas in the backyard will be, I think, uh, easier to do it. And then, uh, in my case, uh, uh, probably in the next three to five years, the shingles would have to be changed. Again, if I place the panels on the rooftop, um, I'll have to take them down, change the shingles in three or five years. Uh, again, it gets very expensive and just creates, um, extra work. Um, I was doing a research online and it also says that the, uh, solar panels, they can create electromagnetic fields. Um, and it's not recommended to have them, uh, over your bedroom, two meters or meter over your bedroom, whereas if I place them at the back, they are safer away from the house. So, yeah, these are the advantages of mounting them on the, on the ground and, uh, I'm open to any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you for hearing me out.
Now, we got an email from you and this, this was my advice is to come and present to council because this would require land use bylaw change. And, um, I, my only question was to was, why don't you just put them on the roof? So you said, um, you think it's safer? You worry about damage to the roof, harder to clean when they're on the roof and then maybe the possibility of electromagnetic field. So. What's, I don't see any questions from my council yet, but what, what's gonna happen? I, I, so you don't want to promise anything until we talk to our staff because there's obviously reasons that we have a land use bylaw and it, and it has restrictions. So as you've probably been following along, we have a public hearing right now that I really need to get to. So what I'm, you can, you can stay online, but it's probably easier for you to flip over to the YouTube channel. Or if you, or, and if you don't want to do that now, you could even watch it later. Uh, because when we're done with the public hearing, we're gonna have, I've already actually asked some staff to be in the room to talk about our land use bylaw and, and the restrictions around, uh, solar panels. So that will be the next step. And then if a member of council, um, thinks it's, it's worth changing our land use bylaw to allow them on the fence or on the ground, then they can make a motion and we'll go from there. So I encourage you, unless there's no questions from council, I think we're good. Yeah. I think the biggest one was what's wrong with the roof and you've highlighted that. Uh, and now we need to know what's wrong with, with the ground. So we'll find that out later. Um, so I encourage you to kind of go back to the YouTube channel later and watch it. And then if you have any further questions, you can always email like you did the first time. Sound good?
That, that sounds great. Just one more thing I missed. So planning and engineering told me that it's okay to place it on the top of the shed in your backyard. Um, the only thing is that the shed bigger than square meters, ten square meters, I'll have to apply a permit uh, to, to place a, you know, uh, twelve meters by two meters, a shed at the back of, of my backyard. Whereas if I place the, uh, if I mount them on the special racking, you know, I still have the nice green grass underneath and I don't have to build huge unnecessary shed in, in, in the backyard.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
You. Great presentation. All right. Council, sorry about the, the delay. We're gonna have to talk about how we notify speakers of the five minutes and/or whether we so representing groups, five minutes like we do in public hearings. Um, all right. So let's go to the public hearing. Let me get to the right page in my agenda package. So this is seven point one, starting on page thirty three. Uh, it is, okay, I'm declaring the public hearing for bylaw seventeen, two thousand and twenty two and bylaw eighteen, two thousand and twenty two, uh, open. We, they're both Aaron Ridge North related area structure planned and a land use bylaw amendment. We have, looks like Eric is ready and queued up. Eric, are you doing the presentation?
I am.
Okay, Mr. Schultz, go ahead. Oh, sorry. Do I need to, I need to ask you all if you have any, um, conflict of interest on this public hearing? Speak up. Speak up or forever hold your peace. All right, go ahead, Eric.
Hey, is my screen showing? Sorry, is my presentation showing?
We can, you and we can see the slides.
Perfect. Okay, um, good afternoon. My name is Eric Schultz. I'm here from Planning and Development to present two bylaws for the Aaron Ridge North neighborhood. Aaron Ridge North is a residential neighborhood located on the north border of St. Albert, just to the east of St. Albert Trail. Uh, the MDP Flores shows the area as neighborhood and the developers completed their design for the remaining lands of Aaron Ridge North. And in order to support their final subdivision, they need two bylaws. Uh, bylaw seventeen slash twenty-two is an amendment to the area structure plan for Aaron Ridge North. And bylaw eighteen slash twenty-two is an amendment to the land use bylaw schedule A. For the ASP amendment, the proposed changes are located in the northeast corner of the Aaron Ridge North neighborhood. And these changes are, number one, to realign a local road moving slightly south. Uh, number two is to adjust the boundaries of a medium density residential, uh, parcel, so it fits better into the road network. Number three, they're taking a small parcel of low density residential units and moving them or distributing them along the local red net, red, eh, road network. And number four, to adjust the boundaries of a high density residential parcel, so that it fits better into the road network. The total area affected by these changes is approximately five point three hectares and the total number of low, medium and high density units in the areas, um, only changing by a couple of units. So basically, density is not being affected. The second bylaw is an amendment to the land use bylaw schedule A. Schedule A graphically shows all of the parcels of land in St. Albert and their current use. When there's a change to one of these uses, uh, redistricting occurs. The applicant is proposing to redistrict approximately nine hectares of land to a mix of uses, which are, include, um, residential RX, uh, medium density residential R three A, high density residential R four and public park P. Uh, the current land use, oh, sorry, when this redistricting is done, if it goes ahead, this will, uh, be the last of all the land in Aaron Ridge North to be redistricted. The current land use for these, uh, lands is mostly urban reserve, which is a holding district until development occurs. However, there is one parcel in the southeast, which is currently districted as low density residential R one and they're requesting to change it to residential RX, so that they may make use of the zero lot line product. This application was, or these applications were circulated to, uh, internal and external stakeholders, as well as residents and business owners within a hundred meters of the amendment areas. No concerns or comments were raised. In conclusion, the proposed area structure plan amendment, yeah, is, uh, supported by the municipal development plan and the land use bylaw amendment is supported by the proposed area structure plan amendment and municipal development plan. And therefore, administration recommends that council approve both bylaws as presented today. That's it. Thank you.
Quick and easy. Thanks for that, Eric. So council, uh, any questions of our administration? Counsel Hughes, go ahead.
Thanks. This is, um, kind of relates to the past. A couple of weeks ago, we approved a different process. If there was like minor changes to the neighborhood structure plan. I'm wondering, um, I know that this was brought forward prior to that, but under the new regulations, would any of this require council approval going forward? If it was a similar type of adjustment, or would this always, would this type of adjustment still require council approval now that we've approved that different process? There's a lot of approvals.
Uh, I believe if, if we had the neighborhood plan in place, the, the area structure plan amendment, which would be called a neighborhood plan amendment, would be something that would be handled by the, uh, subdivision authority, but the redistricting would still have to come before council.
Okay, thank you. Just wondering. That's it. Thanks.
Good question. We're still figuring it out.
I see no more requests. Oh, Council Mackay. Whoa, what do you want to motion? We haven't gone to the public yet. So, okay. We actually only have two registered speakers and they are their proponents. So we have with us Stephen Yu and Kate Lumley. So any questions of, um, the applicant? Seeing none. Stephen and Kate, you were here just for questions or did you have a presentation?
Hi, just for questions.
Okay, good. So seeing that, Counsel Mackay, will you actually make a motion to close the public hearing?
Two minutes, I won't get back. Um, that the, uh, public hearing on bylaw eighteen slash twenty-two be closed.
Keep for that. Uh, call for the vote? Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. Okay, Counsel Mackay, feel like?
Yeah, I can continue on. That bylaw eighteen slash twenty-two being amendment two-one-two to the land use bylaw schedule A be read a second time.
All right, any opening comments?
Uh, no, uh, good presentation by administration and around some of the, uh, uses. And I believe if I caught Mr. Schultz's last kind of comment is, is that, uh, there's, um, there were no residents that have registered to, uh, express any concerns or any, or, or any support. But also this kind of, I think, ends the development in that area. So, uh, congratulations to everybody involved in that planning.
Yep. All right, I see no more people queuing up to speak. The only thing I'll say is thank you, thank you, thank you so much for the side by side of the, of the ASP. The, it, I've asked for that for years and it made so, made me so happy. I was with Ken in Regina. I'm like, oh, that's so happy. So thank you for that. I hope that continues. Um, and I see no one else will call for the vote.
We aim to please.
Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. Uh, third reading, Counsel Mackay.
Yeah, sure. That bylaw seventeen slash twenty-two being amendment twelve to the Aaron Ridge, um, north. Am I reading something different?
No, you're right. That's right.
I apologize. It just looked different than what I read. That bylaw seventeen, twenty-two being amendment twelve to the Aaron Ridge North area structure plan be read a third time.
All right. Anything else?
No, uh, I'm, maybe Eric could get that on his, uh, door. We aim to please.
Call for the vote? That motion passes unanimously. Please forgive me, when we close the public hearing, did we close it for both bylaws? Did you read both them? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, anyone want to do the land use bylaw? Counsel Broadhead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move that bylaw eighteen slash twenty-two being amendment two-hundred-and-twelve to the land use bylaw schedule A be read a second time.
Madam Mayor, point of order. I thought I read, I think I read that one first. Yeah. So we, I, I, I just, is, is this correct? I was reading it off of my, uh, I wasn't reading off of Grandicus or I legislature. I was reading it off of my package. So just point of order, I want to make sure that we're correct.
Sorry, I apologize. You read seventeen first, which is the correct one. Yeah.
As long as we're, because I was reading it off of my information package and I thought I, I, this sounds very familiar to my brain.
If you go to previous votes, you can see what we voted on. Yeah, seventeen. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Was that, but, but is that what I read in on this, our second time?
That's what we voted on, because that's what was on the screen. Yeah.
Don't get old.
Go ahead, Counsel Broadhead.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Sometimes these, uh, amendments to area structure plans are controversial. This is anything but. Uh, so I don't have much to say. This was recommended by administration and as Counselor Mackay said, this is fairly straightforward, so.
All right, anyone else? Call for the vote? Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. Counsel Broadhead, third reading.
That bylaw eighteen slash twenty-two being amendment two-hundred-and-twelve to the land use bylaw schedule A be read a third time.
Awesome. Call for the vote? Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. There you go, Mr. Yu. Thank you so much for coming and answering all those hard questions.
Thank you.
And we're, we're looking forward to seeing more development up there. All right. Okay, we're gonna flip back in time, everyone, to business arising. So I do, I, I know Carrie brought in, um, somebody, Adrian, not to talk about solar panels, but we can also have questions on tell us or victim services or the watershed. So any questions? Counsel Jolly.
Thank you. So to Adrian, I know that the land use bylaw recommend, recommended changes aren't out yet, but are you able to give us a sense of whether this kind of change is, is being proposed?
Uh, yes, Counsel Jolly. So just a little background, um, ground mounted solars, uh, as was noted, have been a prohibited use in the land use district. Uh, we believe that the reason for the prohibition back in time was kind of the more industrial appearance, appearance as well as the potential for impact, um, to neighbors via either height and or reflectiveness of those old panels. Um, we're aware that the new panels are non-reflective generally now. Um, but, uh, as part of the, as part of the land use bylaw review, there's actually a component of, uh, the municipal development plan, which encourages the city to, um, look for new opportunities to implement green technologies for energy, et cetera. And so this is one of the things that we'll be looking into in the L U B review is just what the industry standards are, what, what best practices are as far as, um, solar, solar arrays in residential areas. It's not to say that, um, we haven't, we haven't arrived at a conclusion yet as to whether we would be supportive of it or not, but we will be looking at, um, particularly with this request, whether it's something that we want to bring forward to council or whether we would, um, you know, just address with council the reasons why we wouldn't be bringing it forward with the amendment.
Great. Thank you very much. And your background is also bringing me a lot of joy.
Sorry, the background? Counsel Jolly, um?
Adrian's background is from a very good television show.
I'm literally in the office.
Um, Mr. Slott, is it, do you know, like you said, best practices, you'll do a scan. Do you know of any municipality that allows them on the ground?
I, I'm not aware of any right now that do the ground mounted. We, um, again, we've been very supportive of the, the roof mounted. Just, uh, it's, um, less obtrusive and, and, uh, we haven't had complaints with the roof mounted things that we have had built and seen built. But again, we haven't done a lot of the research on it either. Just from what we know, it's not, it's not super common to have panels. They tend to be a little bit bigger and they can be a little bit taller. We've got, um, you know, like a fence height is limited to two meters and accessory building is limited to three and a half meters. So there's kind of those questions about, um, potential impact to neighbors that we're going to have to, uh, wrestle with and understand along the way here.
Yeah, I would, I would think backyard would be less preferential because of shadowing, right? You're gonna get more shadows, trees than you would up on the roof, but.
Yeah, yeah, and it depends on the neighborhood. And I know that, uh, ground mounted, they can be optimized of, maybe a little bit better sometimes to get the, the best orientation for the sun. But by the same token, like you're saying, there's, depending on the orientation of your lot and, and vegetation and stuff like that, you could have complications with trees, particularly in more mature areas.
Yeah. I visited a solar, um, farm, I guess you'd call it, in Regina at FCM and they had two different kinds of, of panels. They had fixed panels facing south and then they had a whole bunch more going in that were gonna face east-west that would track the sun. It was, it was so, it was so interesting to watch. Anyway, uh, Counsel Killick.
The presenter referenced putting them on the, on a shed. I, I couldn't quite follow the conversation there in terms of, is, is that currently allowed? Or is, or is a shed or maybe garage roof even, um, allowed currently?
Uh, I, I don't have a development officer here, so I'm, I'm, I'm speaking based on my, my best guess. I think as long as, uh, you meet the height requirements for the accessory structure, which is that I think a shed is three point seven meters in a residential district, um, you might be able to do it. But again, I'd have to verify that with my D O's.
Okay, just, I just wondered what had been, it sounded like something had been communicated to the resident that said it was okay, but I wasn't clear exactly as to, so, so maybe we could follow up with just a, a note on that to make sure and make, make sure whatever's been communicated to the resident is, is clear as well. That'd be, that'd be great.
Awesome. Uh, we have Counsel Bromansky.
Uh, through the mayor to administration, I just had a question regarding the breakdown of the panels and the seepage for the environmental contamination to the ground. So say the person is selling the property, would that have to be addressed at that time? Would there be concerns, you know, when the panels are removed in someone, you know, living and barbecuing in that area, so to speak? So would that have to be addressed as part of the plan?
Uh, I'm, uh, Counsel Bromansky, I'm not aware of any, um, sort of environmental remediation requirements or anything that, like that around solar panels at this time?
Uh, it was mentioned when they were talking about installing them along the River Valley in Edmonton and how they break down and there's a seepage from the breakdown into the earth and they didn't want it near watered areas. So they, they do have a, a pollution, you know, process as they're depleting. So I was just concerned about grounds that, you know, that would be used for something else falling.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I think maybe that's something that we can, um, cover with, uh, environment when we, as we do the research on the L U B to see if there are implications that we need to, um, be paying attention to. So that's, I appreciate that comment or that question.
Thank you then.
Awesome. Okay, I, I, I do remember when we approved the solar panel section of the land use bylaw and can't remember who our director of the environment was back then, went to Edmonton anyway. Uh, he said it was very restrictive. So I'm glad that we're going to be looking at, um, at the whole, obviously the whole land use bylaw. So, but if we, if we do a hard focus on the solar panels and, and, and try to make it as flexible as possible, that would be great. Adrian, if I, if I mail back, Mr., uh, or sorry, Matt, just explaining, we're doing a land use bylaw review. We're gonna look at best practices for solar panels in the region and we will explore the opportunity to pull ground oriented level. Uh, would that, would that be fair to, and leave it at that?
Yeah, absolutely. That's fair. And, and we can confirm, um, the messaging around the accessory, like a roof mount on an accessory structure, just to make sure that, um, we've got a consistent message, message there, a clear message there. But absolutely, that's.
And what are my timelines on, on the land use bylaw coming to council?
Yeah, so the land use bylaw, we anticipate bringing back to council. Um, the goal is December of twenty-two here. So we're moving at a pretty quick pace on it. Um, but yeah, that's, that's the goal's end of the year. And I just, um, Mike Mel Ross was the former manager of environment, I believe, that you mentioned. And I don't know if council remembers, but around twenty twenty, uh, council did approve, uh, ground mounted solar in the industrial district. Up until that time, it was prohibited in all districts in the city and we had an applicant come in that, um, had a desired use. But you do see it like in parking areas in some cities, like rather than just have the vacant parking, they'll actually put solar panels over parking and stuff like that. So there are opportunities, uh, that we'll be looking at elsewhere. Um, and we'll just see where that, uh, you know, research takes us.
Awesome. Okay, looking forward to it. I'm just making notes from my email. Okay. Thank you, Adrian. Okay, we're gonna move on. So no more questions on any of the other presenters. Tell us for victim services or the watershed. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on. We are on to the committee business, which is all the R M R motions. Does anyone, do we need to take a break? I know Ken just did, but it's, it's been an hour and a half.
Mayor, did we do consent agenda? I feel like we didn't.
We probably didn't. No, you're right. Okay, let's do that first. Thank you, Counsel Hughes. Uh, does somebody want to move consent? Okay, Counsel Broadhead, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved. Six point one, regular council meeting minutes of May the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two and the committee of the whole meeting minutes of May thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Nine point one, revision to council meeting schedule twenty-one, uh, slash twenty twenty-two. Nine point three, time extension request, twenty-two St. Thomas Street land sale agreement. Nine point four, time extension request, evaluation of standing committees. And nine point six, Alberta Community Partnership Strategic Initiative. And 9.6, Alberta Community Partnership Strategic Initiatives Grant Agreement.
Awesome. Call for the vote. Voting's close, sorry. That passes unanimously. Okay. Okay, so on consent, we just adopted minutes. We've done the public hearing. Now we're on to committee business. So Counselor Killick, 8.1 is a sediment and erosion control. You, you sent us an email with some slightly reworded words. So I'll let you read that into the record, and before I accept it, we'll open it up for questions. And we'll take a break before.
The, what actually isn't in the, the updated one hasn't been loaded into the system, I don't think. I did send it to ledge, but.
Counselor Killick, it is up on the screen.
Thank you. Thank you. That the storm 007 sediment, sediment and erosion control removes 3 million 59,000 from the 2023 10-year utility R M R capital plan, and that these items be moved to future years for consideration.
Excellent. I will open it up for questions now. Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking for the, with the motion, there doesn't seem to be a direction of where to put it. If this is, it's a postponed motion as opposed to an elimination motion now. But saying that goes to future years, I think that there should be a, a slot so that administration knows when it's going to be debated again, since their recommendation was 2023. And if it does pass, they don't know when it's supposed to get slotted. So I guess Counselor Killick, are, are you intending to have it moved back a year? Or what was your intention?
Thank you, Counselor Hughes. Yes, my intention was to take it out of this year's 2023 approval and put it back in after we've had a chance to consider the whole stormwater outfall bill plan and take a look at it in a more holistic and updated view. So I'm not saying we should take this out. I mean, protecting the river is important, but I just didn't think it was appropriate to bring it in to this year's budget for 2023 without further consideration. And, and this guy.
I, I guess to, I'm looking at you, Reagan, just because you and I are currently bonding over a screen. The, what Counselor Killick is asking to have done, is that expected to be finished before the 2024 budget or would be longer than that?
Through, through the chair to Counselor Hughes, this is, this is expected to be completed within one, one year. So we're actually working on the design currently. We, within the 2022 budget year, we're doing the design. What we found is we can't do the design and construction in, within the same calendar year. So, so what we do is we stagger it, we do the design one year, and then we do the construction the following year. And we find we're able to chip away at one or two of these outfalls. Some years zero, some years one, but an average of one per year. And in this case, we're actually looking to do three of them in 2023.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, I'm interrupt you. Just Counselor Killick said he wanted some other study to be finished before we did this. So I'm asking, when will that other study be completed?
So there was a study that was completed in 2021 that, that ranked these, these three outfalls that we're going forward with as, as the highest priorities. So.
Okay.
6B and 17. Sorry, go ahead.
Sure. I had one more question. So Counselor, I'm just suggesting you actually give a defined number or a timeline so that administration has clarity. The other question is the cost for the hydroback. It says it's being rented 15,000 a year. And it doesn't, I don't remember. I would know it was probably somewhere, but how much is it to buy this whole guy?
So we, through the chair to Counselor Hughes, we haven't, we haven't priced out, because we went, we went back to the, the actual supplier that, that, that gave us the rental equipment. Initially, this was thought of as a temporary solution. It's been out there for a number of years. They actually don't have a price. They, they, all, all they will do is rent it to us. They, they're geared towards the residuals. They like to have those, those annual payments coming in. So, so we'll be looking at other, potentially other suppliers, and we'll be looking at something that we would own rather than paying $15,000 a year annually. So, and this isn't hydrovac equipment, this is just the bins that we use, some sedimentation bins that we have. And these are actually out on the Badger site currently, so.
So the bins aren't, wouldn't be super expensive then, right? Because like you've included it somewhere in this estimate for the $3 million, right? So I've just.
That's right. Yes. Yeah, between, between 100 and 200,000, we're, we're expecting this is what, is what we're expecting the bins will cost in, in that order of magnitude. So. There's obviously, there would, there would need to be some engineering that goes along with that, just to, just because it's a, it's a system, a bin system, right? So.
Okay. And I'm assuming the shelf life of these guys is longer than eight years?
I think you can assume that correctly, yes.
Okay, just so that we're just not paying for it to ultimately to replace it right away. Okay, perfect. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Mackay.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just through to administration, Reagan, while I, we, while you're on here. The, the program of installing the interceptors was based out of, out of a study going back as far as 2003, correct? We've been just eating these away a little bit by little bit, just, just due to costs.
Through, through the chair, that is my understanding. That is correct.
So then I know in the background of this is, but just for, so we're, the purposes of doing, so we're actually going to do only two outfalls and then the hydrovac, or is there actually three outfalls that we're intending on doing this year?
So we're actually, there's three outfalls currently, so 17A and 17B. What we're planning to do is combine those into a single outfall. So, so at the end of the day, we will, we expect to have two outfalls remaining, 6B and 17. And yeah, we are, we are planning to do two this year, and then next year, we're planning to do one. It's, it's downfall 19, which is, which is a very large one. So that, that's, that's going to be a, a big undertaking next year. So.
The background refers to the fact that 6B is kind of one of the big ones because of a number of complaints from residents, and it's in a high profile location. So I mean, where's, that's right on St. Albert Trail. Is that the one that's currently?
Right by the River House Grill, right by the River House Grill there, right, right? Yeah, on the west side, I believe, of, of St. Albert Trail.
Are we still experiencing some of the difficulties and costs, or is it more site specific? I know the one that we had, that Boudreaux by Botanica there, it, it went, was that an oil and grit interceptor that was under construction for so long? And then we ended up running into construction difficulties and also sourcing our, some of our material and resulted in like, I don't know, about six months or even longer delays?
We, we can find difficulties. We run into things like high water table for lift stations and, and outfalls. They tend to be in the, the lower elevation areas in the River Valley, where they need to be, obviously. We also find things like old landfills, like some, sometimes there was a small landfill that wasn't on any, any records. And as we're excavating, we, we, we have some, some additional disposal costs that we didn't, we didn't potentially proceed. And contingencies are meant to address some of that. But high water table, as I would say, is probably the most difficult situation with our, with our silty soils here in, in the city of St. Albert. That, that can cause us some issues. So. But I guess I'll just, I just, I just add to that, we aren't seeing, with these smaller projects, we aren't seeing as much of an impact of the global supply chain issues, if you will. There's a lot of risk and, and those, mostly the multi-year projects that, that are affected by those global supply chain issues. If we can keep the project small, it tends not to have a huge risk profile for the contractor. So they're not pricing in an exorbitant amount of risk over, over several years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So when did the planning for these, for the work for this year, when, when was that done?
So we've, we've known that 6B has been a priority for a number of years, and it's just, it's never made it to the top of the list. But with the study that was done in 2021, so just, just last year, 6B and 17, I think it was 17A, were identified as the, the number one and number two concerns. 17A, it's, it's as a result of a sinkhole upstream of, of that particular outfall. That's one of the main drivers. But we also see some scouring. There's, there's some, the pipe is, is due for replacement. A section of pipe is due for replacement. It's actually separated. And then that's what's causing the sinkhole is, is two sections of pipe have separated from each other. So we're, we're getting, we're getting sediment that's, that's actually infiltrating into the, into the pipe from just immediately upstream of, of the outfall. So.
So this is, this was planned work all along for this, this year as part of our strategic plan to redo the outfalls into the community and reduce the, the grit and oil and all the other contaminants coming into the river.
Well, it is, it is part of a larger program, but I, I don't, the dollar amount, I, I think we adjust a little bit from year to year, depending on the projects. We don't have, we, we can't spend exactly the same, the same budget. It, it's going to be driven by the project, right? So we have, we have an, an, an engineering consultant that, that produces a cost estimate on an individual project basis. And yeah, we were hoping to address these number one and number two priorities with, within the 2023 calendar year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Killick.
Thank you through the chair to administration. The identification of these being a priority from residents is that there's an accumulation of silt in the river, and they walk by and they walk over the bridge, and they see the silt in the river. It's not that they see an outflow. It, it, is that correct?
I, I think it's, it's a bit of both, right? It's the condition of the outfall in a high profile location, right? There, there's, there's no grade on it, so there's some safety issues with that. But that would, that would be a much cheaper fix just to install a grading on it. But there are other issues as well. We, there's some structural problems at both of these sites. So there, the one of them, we're planning actually to, to replace one pipe section, and we're planning to, to do a cure it in place lining upstream to, to address some of the deficiencies for their upstream. So there's a number of structural deficiencies, I would say. So it's, it's not just in, in, in response to residents' concerns at a high profile location. I think that lends itself more to the safety aspect of it, because it is in a high profile location that lends itself to passersby and potentially children. You know, poking their heads inside the outfall, that kind of thing. So, yeah, we, we want to get a grading on there. But we, we, we end up with a pretty long laundry list of, of things that we want to address at the outfall location. And, and then that's when it becomes a priority for replacing the entire outfall structure. So.
So, so there are other factors, but one of the key things that I keep hearing is sediment in the river that's been going into the river for 20 to 30 to 40 years. We're not going to, by putting in these oil and grit separators, that's, that's only going to be help moving forward. It's not going to do anything to remove any of the existing grit or I've heard the term sandbars that are, are, are in the river right now.
I do believe they wash away. You know, when you have a high water gear, they do get washed downstream.
Okay, I, I've heard that they, a little bit gets washed away, but a large majority of those sandbars still stay there. There is a small channel, but may, maybe some grit does get washed further downstream. The, in, in the briefing, it also said that we could be liable for fines. Have, have we ever been fined? And we're continuing to put grit and oil in, into the river for years and years. Have we ever been fined either through the provincial government or?
Not to my knowledge, but it, I mean, it is a risk, right? And just to give you a little more background, the sediment that makes its way into the river, you know, like when, when we collect from catch basins and from these oil and grid interceptors, you know, we, we, we have the sedimentation bins that we use. It's actually out at the Badger site. And with the residual solids material is, is sort of a dried sludge. That's a combination of sand, silt, some organics in there. But when we get a test, we actually find there's hydrocarbon levels that, that, that make, make it so we, we can't just take it to an ordinary landfill. We have to take it to a, to a class two landfill, right? And I mean, we're, we're concentrating it when we evaporate the, the water off or, or when, when you remove the water, you, you, you're concentrating it a bit, but there are hydrocarbons in there. So. Hydrocarbons are coming in in some of our older outfall locations, especially a location like this, which is right adjacent to St. Albert Trail. There would be hydrocarbons as well as the sediment from, from St. Albert Trail.
So my, my motion to look at deferring this funding for this year was more along the lines to say, how could we, could we reevaluate the program? We've, we've had these, this grid interceptor program running for almost 20 years, I think, from the first environmental studies. And it was to look at how could we have a bigger impact to improving the quality of the river, both from an, primarily from an environmental opportunity to, to rather than just.
Let's keep debate and questions separate.
So, yeah. So the question is, would removing the existing 20 to 30 to 40 years of silt have a bigger impact to the quality of water in the river environmentally, rather than putting in a, an oil and grit separator that is going to capture just on a go-forward basis? Which would have the larger impact?
I think the, the studies that have been done in the past recommended a, a long-term program for oil and grid interceptors, right? And we, we couldn't do all 49 of them at once, and not all 49 are, are going to have O G I's on them. Some of them are very small catchments. Some of them, we're looking at possibly just a large manhole immediately upstream rather than an O G I. If there's, if it's just, you know, a grass park area, and that's all that's feeding into that particular outfall, we consider that one to be low risk. So we're not planning to put O G I's on all of them. But to date, I think we've, we've done nine of them that are on the Sturgeon River. And I, I have to check my numbers, but I think it's five or seven of them on Big Lake. So.
So, yeah, I, I think those numbers were in the, in the briefing, so that, that's good. You did bring up in the briefing about removal as, as an op, option. So my question is, can, can removal be done? Obviously, we have to get licenses and approvals, government approvals to work in the river to build these sites. Would those licenses and approvals be the same for removal if it was done? Is it even, can you comment, is it feasible to do grit removal during the winter when there's no fish life, you know, without disturbing fish life? And I'm not talking dredging, I'm talking, you know, high-tech, very targeted, accurate hydrovacuum to remove accumulated sediment?
Through the chair, I think what we found is it's very difficult to get those approvals for, for dredging something like the Sturgeon River.
But I'm not talking about dredging. Dredging has this.
Well, that, that, that's how Alberta Environment would view it though, right? They, they would, you know, hydrovacuum, call it, it's removal of something that's within, within a riverbed, right? And there's going to be a lot of scrutiny on that. So.
To even improve the riverbed and quality of life for fish and invertebrates and repairing area, they would, even if we're, we're not doing it for beautification, we're doing it to actually improve the environment, there would, there would be pushback?
It, it, it's very difficult to get those approvals, and it would be, it would be a lengthy process, and it would be an expensive process with, that would involve engineering consultants. And we'd, we'd have to put together a very technical report for, for Alberta Environment to approve something like that. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't be something, that would, that would be a very expensive undertaking.
And that, that would be significantly different than getting the permits to actually work in the river to do the oil and grit separators?
Yes, it would be, right? We're, we're replacing an existing approved outfall location with, with a new and improved outfall. So, yes.
Okay. The, the last question, I guess, is really, again, goes back to Counselor Hughes's question in terms of the drying pad out at Vilneve, that we're, we're, we're renting that. So is, is R M R the right way to replace that with a, should, if we're going to buy it, shouldn't, shouldn't that be a capital project under a capital charter rather than an R M R charter? Just trying to understand what the best financial way to move that forward. I, I don't know.
It is a capital charter. Yeah. So I don't know if Diane, you want to jump in? It's so, it's the, and it's funded out of our reserve, right? And it's just, we have utility capital charges, we have group municipal, then we also have R M R and growth. So there's like four different buckets of capital charters. This is a capital charter.
Okay.
Good enough?
Yeah, that's fine. It's a little bit different with utilities, right? Because they're all funded through utility rates. So whether we call it growth or R M R, it actually involves kind of coming out of the same, often calculated into the same rates. It could have been, that little piece could have been put forward as a growth charter, because it is something new. But it would have, it wouldn't have any impact on the rates or anything. Could be the same.
Okay. And, and yeah, and last question. And yeah, and last question in terms of finance. If, if we were to move this into a subsequent year, it's not like we would lose the reserve funding. It, it could be, we could reevaluate whether oil and grit separators are the biggest impact versus other opportunities, but we wouldn't lose the money out of reserve, correct?
Yeah, you're correct. So the money would just remain in the reserve, but it would have, it would have zero impact on the actual utility rates because our rates are based on a 10-year model. As long as those costs remained within the, within the 10-year bucket, it would, it would create the same utility rate. So there wouldn't be any, any savings per se to do that, but we would, you're correct. We wouldn't lose the money. It would just stay in the reserve until we had approval to send it.
Thank you.
And I guess to give, sorry, if I could add a little more to what you were saying, Counselor Kilik. We, we, we do hydrovacuum of, we've got actually about 5,700 outfall, sorry, catch basins within the city. And we hydrovacu about 1,000 of them each year. So we're trying to remove the sediment that source at, at the catch basins. And, and we, just to give you an idea, in 2021, we hydrovacu 1,139 catch basins. And we collected 175 cubic meters of sediment from those 1,139 catch basins. We also hydrovacu 14 of these oil and grid interceptors. And we got 238 cubic meters of material from, from those 14 oil and grid interceptors. So, so those 14 are doing more work than, than 1,000 catch basins, so.
Thank you.
All right, there are no more questions, Counselor Kilik. I have not accepted your motion. I want to just look to you. Are you still planning on moving it? Even after all you've heard? It's up to you.
My, my intention was to move, move forward by putting a whole, putting this on hold for one year so we could reevaluate whether grit interceptors are the best way to have a positive impact on the, on the environmental health of the river.
Okay.
And I'm still like hydrovacuum and doing a very targeted removal of grits, I'm still not-
It's a very complicated, and I'm going to support whichever way you want to go. We can take your motion and debate it. And, or, or I could suggest to Counselor Kilik that you do an IR, so what is the best way? And it might take a little bit of work, but I mean, we've heard from administration, this is their number one recommendation to protect our river. And I know that's your priority. I can hear that. So maybe it's more of an IR, maybe best practices in other cities. Because it's so complicated, you know, how much sand and salt we put on our roads during the, in the winter. It's a bigger conversation that I, I'm getting into debates, right? I wouldn't want to delay this project without that information. So maybe it's an IR?
That, that would work for me. I'm, I'm really trying to determine what, two, two things. One, it's what's best for the environment and what's best for the use of, of the tax dollars for this. Would it be better to redirect them in a, in a different direction? But I guess I've heard that it's very complicated to do silt removal, even though that might have a bigger, bigger impact to river health. And so.
I guess if I could, if I could add a little bit more, the OGIs are just one small component of what we're building here, right? Like that, the idea of the program is we're trying to time the installation of the OGI with the renewal of the outfall. So this is actually outfall renewal. This is, this is an asset that's reached near the end of its life. And, and we need to spend some money to renew the outfall. And when we're doing that, it's the most cost-effective time to install an OGI, if an OGI is deemed appropriate at that location, right? And we have the hydrovac, hydrovac truck ourselves, so, so that reduces our costs. We don't have to use a contractor to do that. That's how we're able to do 1,139 catch basins and 14 OGIs in, in one year. That would be very expensive if we were to contract all of, all of that out. So now that we have our own hydrovac unit, we can do it very cost-effectively with this program, so.
I, I would just say, the conversation that we've just had has been very helpful, in particular the last two minutes. First, the largest bit for me in terms that we have to repair the outfalls. And at the same time, that's the optimal time to spend some, a little bit extra money to do the oil and grit interceptors or that deep manhole for 17A and B. That, that totally makes sense to me now and answers my question. So although it took a little bit of discussion to get there.
I should have led with that. I should have-
You, you were just trying to keep me in suspense, I know. I had to work for my, for my supper there. I appreciate that. So I'd, I'd met America and I'd removed the motion based on the information we've just received. And I would like to, to see a follow-up IR. I'll do that later in the agenda on, on silt removal. Thank you.
Yeah, it might be a good conversation for the Environmental Advisory Committee as well.
Yeah.
Carrie, Diane, Diane, this whole last 20 minutes has brought something. This would have been a great conversation at committee. So maybe next year, instead of bringing the RMR to committee once, we do it twice, right? And, and because I have a feeling the next few of them are going to be resolved very similar with a little bit more information. So just, just a note to myself that maybe we do it twice to, so that they submit their motions and then we actually have more conversation about specific projects. That was the spot. Okay, we are moving on now to Counselor Bromansky's motion on the storm. Okay, we'll break it for, okay, it's four o'clock. I get into it. Take a 15-minute break and we'll be back in our chairs at 4:15. No, thank you. I need to be reminded of a lot of things today.
On that clock. Let Sean start us up. Okay. Thank you, Councilor Jolene. Councilor Hughes, you with us?
I'm here. Sheena was here a second ago.
Sheena, you there? Awesome. Okay. We are now on to, sorry, eight point two, which is Councilor Mantsky's motion on storm. Zero zero one, the utility master plan. So as we did before, just read it in and then before I accept it, we'll go to questions.
Through the mayor, I did combine the three.
Oh, right. Eight point two, three and four.
Yeah, just in respect of everyone's time because the backgrounders were identical anyhow.
Why don't you read it in as a combined motion then?
Okay, thank you. That the ten year utility RMR capital plan be amended to remove the 2024 update to the storm. Zero zero one utility master plan, wastewater 10 utility master plan. And water zero zero two utility master plan.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so I'm going to go to questions. Does anyone on council or do you or anyone have any questions of either administration or Councilor Mantsky? You have some questions?
I have, I do, but I can.
No, go ahead. You're the first up, so.
Okay, so my first question through the mayor for administration. The plan for these capital plans through consultants were usually planned for a five and year, five and 10 years span. And the 2013 was not was pushed, was supposed to be done in 2018, but it was not completed in 18. And it was pushed to 2020 and 2021. Why was it pushed from 2018 to 2020?
So the 2013 was completed in 2013. It was actually completed in 2014. So generally, you'll start it in one year and finish in the second year. The 2018 update was delayed as a result of the new MDP, right? And it's sort of chicken and the egg with the MDP and the utility master plan. You need the utilities in order to have the land uses, but we need to know what land uses you have in mind before we can do the utility planning. So utility master plans were delayed. The main reason was actually because of the flourish MDP. We wanted to fully incorporate the flourish MDP into the utility master plan. There was a little bit of delays as a result of COVID, but the main delay was because of the MDP, the new MDP.
Okay, and so that plan was completed in 2021 with results related to administration in March of this year, 2022.
The final reports were March of 2022.
Okay, and now we're just a few months later. And then there's another one planned for, you know, much closer than five years. So I'm just wondering the reason for that.
So the plan is to start in 2023, but the bulk of the cost would actually be in 2024. And I think it's actually in there as a line item in the 2024 budget. And the main, you know, we actually did have some internal conversation about whether we needed it. Because we're actually doing some some bridge engineering to get us through because these annexation lands are really the main driver for us. We don't even think we can wait until 2024 to deal with some of the new annexation lands. One of the challenges, water is a little easier to deal with. But sewer lines, you know, you have to make sure that you've got the sewer sign, sorry, the sewer line sized appropriately and at the right depth to accommodate a larger development area, right? So we need to make sure that we fully included all of the annexation lands that we're planning to service from the developers that are actually building right now this year. You know, speaking of Sherro and Avenir, the sewer lines through those lands have to be sized appropriately for just about the entire northwest part of St. Albert. So that planning is critical at this stage.
Okay, and what dollar amount was dedicated to the plan that was just completed?
I don't have those exact numbers, but I think it was probably close to six hundred or seven hundred thousand dollars in total between the water utility master plan and the sewer utility master plan.
Okay, and so with this new master plan, administration did advise that it could be completed internal with a little bit more staff in 2024 to 2029. If you could that work if you still had that 2029 date dedicated as you've got it in the plan now?
It can work. I mean, I come from a utility where we used to do the utility master planning in house. That's why my previous employer was Epcor. And but we had substantially more staffing than we do here at the city of St. Albert. So I expect that we would spend more in the additional salaries for those individuals that would be doing the utility master planning, as well as we'd have to find them office spaces. And we'd actually I don't want to, the expertise that we get from these consultants is very valuable. And I guess one more thing to add is these utility master plans are not entirely 100% external, right? It is a joint document that's put together both by our internal staff. We provide a lot of input. There's regular meetings. And we know a lot of the nuances of the system. So it's both in-house and external. It's not 100% external right now. So we're incurring some internal costs currently. But I actually think it would cost us more to do it 100% internally. And I think we'd end up with a product that's not as good a quality as what we're getting from the consulting industry.
And then the other, I have quite a lot of questions, so bear with me. The consultant list, it said that it's hard to book consultant for this purpose. So are you always guaranteed of getting the best consultant? You know, it seems like you have to book ahead prior to you even needing them. And if you don't book ahead, is there, you know, is there a difference in quality or abilities of consultants that you would book?
It is a big commitment because, you know, like we said, it's about a full calendar year. And they'll have one or two individuals that are just about fully dedicated doing our utility master plan. And then they'll be pulling in modelers and other expertise. But it is a significant commitment from a particular engineering consultant for that, you know, one year plus or minus period.
Okay, so you do work in conjunction with the consultants or complemented to each other.
Correct.
If you would be getting notification of environmental issues, say in your water master plan, because, you know, the city would generally be advised of those prior to, say, they came in the middle of the consultant plan, would the city not be able to move, maneuver better on their own? When the consultant isn't even aware of these things? Or would you have to convey that to them and then they add it on and they come back to you?
Again, it's a bit of both, like these engineering consultants, they're doing utility master plan exercises for other municipalities as well, right? And they're getting learnings from the can moors and from, you know, other, the air trees, like the mid-sized municipalities that are, you know, it's very common to use an external consultant to put these plans together. So they bring a lot, they bring another set of eyes and they bring a lot of expertise. And that knowledge is, complements our existing in-house staff currently.
And the consultants, they don't work with life cycle replacement or condition assessment of existing infrastructure. It's just they're focusing on kind of one avenue going forward. Is my understanding.
That is correct. It doesn't, it doesn't, not all the items that they're capturing are going to show up in our RMR program. They are looking at things like capacity, so they'll do a lot of the water and sewer modeling and they'll identify where lines are too small. But there are other drivers for why we do renewal programs. It isn't just that the line is too small now. It's, we also consider the age of it and we also consider the condition assessment. We do our own cameraing and we contract out some of the cameraing of some of our sewer lines. And that's another big input into our RMR program for the sewer system.
So on my, you know, bringing this motion forward, you know, we're looking at 1.2 million dollars or almost 2 million dollars if we're adding in the 2029. You know, so I adjusted my, you know, my motion to just remove the first part. So you have that backup plan if the 2029 is still there, you can pull it to 2027. But I mean, I would like to see internal be able to, you know, to be able to handle most of the project rather than. And I had a question that I could dedicate, if I could, to Diane, I guess. Be with the funding because it was relayed to me that in if the alternate motion was put forward, that it would result in cost savings in utility rates. Although insignificant, which all, you know, savings are good to me. But you had mentioned prior that I know it would stay in the reserve. But it also mentions here that the utility rates would be saved as well. And we're going into a time where every little savings I'm trying to dig for, right?
Through the chair to Councilor Bremanski, I guess, sorry, if I could just make one comment here. I mean, utility master planning, like it looks like a lot of money, right? It's a little, a million dollars, right? A little over that. But if you build one sewer line in the wrong location or make it the wrong size, that'll easily cost you a million dollars, right? Just one project, if you've done it incorrectly on the utility side of things. Sorry.
My concern is, you know, could you not stick to the five and 10 year variance is what, you know, is what the plan was, right? Now we just finished one and we were saying we need another one in a year and a half.
And the annexation is the big driver right now, right? We had an internal conversation, myself and the engineering group. And it's the annexation that's a big driver. If we didn't have this annexation coming forward, we might, we would, we might be recommending to defer the next UMP. But the annexation has.
Sorry.
The annexation is a game changer. Sorry, go ahead.
But that will be worked between 2024 and 2029, correct?
Some of the recently annexed lands are looking forward, are planning to come forward this year, so.
So what portion of the plan that was just finished are you going to be able to use?
We'll be able to fully utilize the existing plan, but it doesn't cover the annexation areas. Those were excluded from the scope.
Okay.
Because it was a 2018, it was a 2018 utility master plan that was then delayed to 2020 to accommodate the MDP. But it wasn't further delayed to 2022 to accommodate the annexation lands. So the old city boundary from last year is what was covered by our current utility master plan.
Okay, I guess that's all the questions for now. Oh, I did want to know about the savings. Sorry.
Again, so I'll just also reiterate this. So what I'm going to tell you is about if we were to remove, the reason why this one would impact the utility rates is you weren't talking about just taking that dollar value and moving it to a different year within that tenure scope. Because that's where I'm saying it doesn't impact the rates. This one you were talking about actually removing that, I don't know, 600,000 or 700,000 or how much it was for those three components directly from the tenure plan. So that would have a very minor effect on utility rates. But to kind of reiterate, you know, what Regan said as well, is it's probably going to come back. If we didn't do that planning, it's going to come back, you know, maybe at least that amount, if not more. Where we don't have the information to make the decisions that we need for future planning of those utilities. So may have a very short term reduction, but it could cause extra costs in the future.
Okay, and then the 410,000 that's, you know, dedicated to each, you know, each project consultant, so 1.2 million in total. Where is that number, you know, chosen from, you know, because you had that number in place prior to, you know, annexed lands or other projects. So you have it set at 410,000 and then you're going to another 250,000 in a certain number of years. It just seems like it's just a number that doesn't necessarily match the project.
So for that, so Regan, correct me if I'm wrong. Typically, typically our utility master plans are done as one project. So it's a water wastewater and storm. It's kind of done as one project for purposes of utility rates. We've just split it up into the three categories so that, so that each of the rates can bear a bit of the cost. But it's typically managed, this last one that we did, we did separate it between the water was a separate one from the storm and.
The sanitary, correct.
Typically, we do it as one because it's more efficient to do, have one consultant kind of do the whole piece of it, which is what the plan was this time. But for financial purposes, it was just split equally among the three different utility types, just for the purposes of sharing the rates among those different groups.
And so the last one that ended up being 600,000 or 700,000 was predicted to be 400,000 at the start of it?
I believe so, yes. We're coming, we came in slightly under budget on each of our utility master plans that we've done.
So you're predicting low at 1.2 million dollars?
Possibly because we're doing that bridge engineering through the charity council of Bremanski. We're doing that bridge engineering right now, so we think that's going to give us a head start, so we might be able to reduce that cost. But we're not counting on that right now. There was, there was some money left from the annexation budget that we're using to do some bridge engineering to deal with some of our most pressing issues with the annexation lands. So there was, there's some gaps in our, in our current utility master plan. And some of these new annexation lands are looking to develop very quickly before we have a new UMP in place. So in that two-year window, we want to make sure that we're getting, especially the sewer lines correctly sized. And we think that's going to give us a head start on the sanitary and storm side for the UMPs. But we haven't, we haven't reduced the expected budget of that. That's just based on the historical, it's based on our experience of a full UMP update, the cost.
So we really don't know what cost increases to utilities would be in the end then?
There would, there would be an adjustment based on the actual cost. So if we come in under budget, then, then there will be an amount, I think, I think it goes to the utilities reserve if we end up not spending it on the project.
I just see that we're off like, you know, off schedule kind of on a lot of avenues. So I'm just trying to see what we have going forward, if it will in fact be every five years or every two years or whatever, whatever comes up.
Through the chair to Councilor Ratsky, it's a smaller window, you know, with only being two years away. But it's the annexation that's the big driver here, right? All those lands that we've added, there's a significant impact on the utility master planning, so.
And you'd be looking for a consultant in 2023 quarter four is what I saw as well?
We would look to secure the consultant in 2023, but the bulk of the work we expect would be in 2024.
In just one year or would take a couple of years?
I, historically, we've been able to do them in one year. Here, I think this recent experience was a lot to do with COVID. Once, once we actually got started on it, it took us a little, it took us about 18 months and some of that was due to COVID. So I don't expect we're going to see that again.
If you were doing the work in-house, would there be, would there be a gauge of a more ideal time to have that consultant help you?
It would be a very different, it would be a very different way to do the utility mess. And I think we would be doing smaller updates and it would be more regular updates and shorter durations. I think it would become an almost annual exercise, so.
Could they be more accurate?
As I said previously, I think we're getting good value from the consultants. And I think it's a good collaboration with our staff and they complement our own engineering and our utilities expertise in-house. I think it would end up costing us more and I think, I think we would have a lesser product if we did it in-house.
Okay, all fit for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Sure, this, uh, Council Hughes has a question.
Hey, Regan, how you doing? Um, okay, just a couple. So you delayed it for the MDP, I get that. Why did you not delay it for the annexation when we knew the annexation was also upcoming? We had a pretty good timeline of when we were hoping to complete it. So what was the reasoning not to delay it an extra year and a half?
All right, so that was a question that I asked Kate before she left, so I'll, I'll answer with, with, with the response that she gave me. Um, and the, the reason is we've already delayed it for two years. Um, and, and we need an updated utility master plan, right? The 2013, 2014 utility master plan was out of date by, by, by the time we got this one started. And, uh, um, you know, we didn't get started until 2020 and, uh, we, we, it would have been further delayed and we were already starting to see some issues, uh, with having an out-of-date utility master plan in place, so.
So you just felt you couldn't go that much longer is what you're saying?
That is correct, that is correct.
Okay, um, and the other thing is, when they do these changes, are they substantial? Like every five years when you see a new UDP, uh, UMP, is it like a brand-new book or is it just like minor tweaks most of the time?
It, it really depends. Um, on, on the water side, we saw some very substantial changes in the water UMP. So that was the elimination of the planned south reservoir and, uh, and, and the expansion of, of the planned north reservoir. And then there was a lot of, uh, changes to the, to the, the reservoir supply lines as well as the transmission lines as, as a result of that. And it ended up, uh, reducing our, our water off-site levy, uh, pretty significantly in, in this last year. We, we saw less impact on, on the sanitary and storm side. There weren't a lot of big changes there. Um, but on the water side, we, there were definitely some, some big changes.
One more question then I'm done. So you're talking about, and I, I get the driver in force of this annexation, like it's, it's a need. I'm not, so I'm not going to argue with you about that at all. But you said you have people that are developers that are planning to develop before this is done. So is there a strategy in place in how we can handle this so that we aren't making mistakes that we have to correct later? Or, um, are we going to bring it, the developer on board for the most, not developer, the consultant on board for the processing issues right away to try to handle those and then get the rest reported? Is that the intention? Or how do you plan to handle that? Just out of curiosity.
Through the Chair to Councilor Hughes, through the Chair to Councilor Hughes, we, we had some discussions back and forth between ourselves, transportation and, and planning. And planning offered up that they still had some money left from the annexation budget to do some additional engineering studies. So we actually, um, did a change order with, uh, with the consultant that did the, the annexation engineering. And, uh, because that was, that was more high level and we wanted them to take a deeper, deeper dive on, on a few things. And some of it was, uh, the line sizing and, and the elevations of the sanitary and storm through the avenue and row hit developments and, uh, and figuring out how large that catchment area needs, is, is going to be. And, and how, how, basically, the big thing is how, how large those lines need to be. And that, that helps drive our off-site levy program. That helps getting the developers work together. If we, if we've got a good plan, um, developers don't want to oversize their infrastructure. But if, if it's a shared cost and other developers are, are picking up their fair share, then, then we can get some more efficiencies in our infrastructure. Other, everybody building their own individual pipes. Uh, we, we can, we can work towards a shared pipe. Um, and having a good utility master plan is, is, is a good, a good start. It gets everybody on the same page, I guess, when you, when you have those discussions about who's going to share them the costs of, of the, some of those major infrastructure improvements.
Thank you. I just want to say, Regan, that of course loss is our gain, so I'm glad to have you here. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, I see no more questions. Councilor Bromansky, do you still plan on moving forward with this motion? I'll accept it. Go ahead.
That the 10-year utility RMR.
You don't have. Yeah, you don't have to read it again. You read it and I just accepted it.
Okay.
So go ahead on your opening arguments.
Okay. So some of the comments on this, um, you know, I'm, I'm finding that, that the taxpayer needs to see organization and timing of when we're spending their hard-earned tax dollars. So to have it, you know, if I was, if I could see the plan and see, I know we're spending this in five years and we're spending this in 10, but not, not like, oh, a few dollars here, a few dollars there, um, you know, 300,000 over here, a million over here. I just want to see order in the plan and stay on schedule, so to speak. And I also see that if, if, if interior staff were working on the projects themselves, they would, they would be able to stand behind the projects better, like know every detail of that project. So I know that it's nice to be working, you know, having the consultants doing the major stuff, but it would be nice to gradually phase them out so that you can hold your own projects, you know, more accurate. So I'm looking for accurate timing and accurate funding. Uh, the other thing that was mentioned in the backgrounder is that it saves developers' money when we do this. So we're spending, I understand that, you know, they need to decide which kind of, you know, lines to run and so on. I'm not an expert in that by any means, but the, um, we're saving developers' money by paying for consultants. So I, you know, I just want it, that didn't seem to make sense to me either. I, I, I agree that we should be working together, but, uh, um, we don't want to spend any more tax dollars than we need to. Um, again, it was confirmed that the work could be completed in-house over, you know, with a little bit extra staff. It didn't say a lot of extra staff. The tax savings are there for the citizens. The, the money stays in the reserve for other projects that could come up. So this is the other thing we have to consider is that if there's an emergency project that comes up or something else in one of these utility things that we need the funding for, that could be added on to these consultant fees. So all of a sudden, there's no money in the reserve for that and you're coming to council for more money again. This is something that hit home with me. We spend 0.6% of the utility budget maintaining all the parks and trails in St. Albert. And we spend 1.4 on consultants and plans. And consultants and plans can, you know, be obsolete, they can be used, they can be not used, partial, part of them can be used. So I would like to try and keep it so that we're just getting, if we do need consultants, it's for more minor things and exactly the things that we need them for. Not for a plan that may not, may not work or may not continue. Um, I also do have an information request, uh, with administration that was to be provided of the cost of consultants. That's to be provided to me June 20th. So that was another reason I wanted to see exactly, you know, how much money is dedicated to consultants in all the avenues because it seems to be a lot of money. Um, shortage of a consultant was answered to me. So, um, again, I'd like to be guaranteed that the consultant that we get when we need them is the right consultant for the job. And, um, let's see here. Officially. Okay, and then the, the other thing is, is we're balancing, we've got, we're working with inside staff and consultants. But then we've got inside staff working on the life cycle replacement and the condition and set assessment of existing infrastructure. So you're kind of balancing two different areas of projects and using the consultant for one. And I would like that the inside staff could be experts in everything and use the consultants only for the, the fine details if needed. So that's why I'm arguing for this. I believe that it would be worth a try, uh, you know, to have administration do it. It's mentioned in the background where they could. And, um, I, you know, I've removed from my, my motion, the, you know, I was going to eliminate 2024 and 2029. But, um, the 2024, I think, would be a good start. And then, uh, administration would have a guide if, you know, where they're at on these plans. And if they need to pull back, you know, a consultant, the consultant dollars from the 2029 of, you know, 200, 2, 250,000 dollars plus 400,000 or something in between. But we're dedicating money to, to items that we don't really know what we're getting out of it at this point in time.
All right, anyone else on debate? I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a few comments because I see no one else and then I'll go back to you, Councilor Bromansky. But, um, and my comments are going to refer to almost all of the upcoming motions. So when I was first elected, we actually had just one capital plan where we had utilities and we had municipal. But the growth and RMR were kind of mixed together. And then you had RMR competing with growth and the growth is always the sexy stuff. So we, we made a very deliberate attempt to split it out because the RMR, in my opinion, 100% has to be funded. We just spent an entire morning and workshop on asset management and, um, and, and the, the implications and results of if you don't take good care of your existing assets. And then since we brought in the RMR budget, we've gone through this process. Then the, the other advantage of doing it in June was that we could, um, even though the budget isn't approved officially, uh, it's generally not touched in the fall and it allows our staff to start getting, um, some of the RFPs out to the, to the construction companies, et cetera. So it helps them out there. And so since we've been doing this, I think this is, I think Mr. Hilt said there's been one motion to remove something from RMR and, yeah. So, I, so my inclination is not to support anything that takes away our asset management program. And, and, and these specifically are, are, listening to Councilor Bromansky's comments about having a good vision of a 10-year, like of the plan and, and so we coordinate better, is exactly what these utility master plans are going to give us. And, um, and we do have a great 10-year plan and, 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 you know, Councilor Hughes and Councilor Broadhead and I spent lots of time going through that utility model, the rate model and, and the rolling. And I honestly think it's fantastic. And I also think we need to be very careful. These are not tax dollars that we're talking about. These are, these are, um, rates that we pay for utilities. And so if, if we remove these, don't expect your taxes to go down. So that, that's very, we need to be very clear in the language that we use. And by the way, Councilor Bromansky, the utility budget does not fund, um, trails and parks. You, you made that comment and it doesn't fund that. Okay, you said the utility budget funds, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you understood that. So, um, I feel like a lot of your comments had to do around consultants and how we, how we do projects, not about the specific projects themselves. And, um, so one of the reasons I really don't want to support many of these is because they're one-offs and they're not good governance. And I think good governance would be around creating a policy on consultants, for example. Or, um, a couple of years ago, Council Broadhead, um, we had life cycle replacement of transit buses that were, it's every 15-year, he brought into policy that it was every 18-years instead. And so we don't have to worry about these one-off motions every year to try to delay and save money because, um, you know, some of your other ones later on, Council Bromansky, about IT and stuff maybe should be policy-related instead of pulling them out of the budget and just sticking them back in the next years. Because I find what happens is if you pull something out next year, it gets more expensive. It just, and look at the cost of construction, this increases that we're facing this year. So my, my, my thoughts are that this is a little too one-off. It threatens our asset management. And, um, and, and we should be thinking at a higher level instead of project by project. We should be thinking, um, policy-wise because the specifics of all these, and we learned about the sediment erosion control motion, the specifics are done by our, our experts in-house and they know, they know what we need. They, they go out and do the life cycle maintenance. They, they check on our buses and our, and our IT stuff and our storm, everything. And they know when it needs to be replaced and, and the resulting implications. If you disagree with replacing a, a computer every four years or whatever it is, then make a motion to do it every five years and then let's have that debate. That would be a really good governance debate. So that's just my thoughts, um, around these is, is this is to me, uh, a national issue about asset management in municipalities. And we should be very proud of the fact that we have good, I'm sure we could get better. We have decent asset management in St. Albert and I don't want to threaten that in any way. So those are just my, some of my thoughts. And that kind of, I want to do it all at once because it kind of refers to everything, but that's kind of my thoughts on this one. So anything to close? Because I don't see any more hands up.
I just wanted to mention that, um, it was administration that did ask us what we would want to remove. You know, so I mean, I worked hard on it, looking at dollars. I, I believe I work for the taxpayer. Um, you can say it's not taxes, but I mean, utilities, taxes, it all comes out of my wallet, so that's how I look at it. And, um, the, I just, I just see there's so many changes to things. Like we just finished a budget in, in December and numbers have changed dramatically in a lot of things since then. So we're, you know, we're four months later and all of a sudden it's another, you know, 2 million here, a million here. And, um, I just, I mean, I am new at this, but I mean, I don't like seeing all those dollars. And I understand RMR, you know, you need to repair, need to maintain, of course. Do you need to replace? I don't know. You know, I mean, sometimes maybe we're replacing when we could repair. There's, um, I guess there's many avenues to it and I do appreciate the work that administration does. I believe they work hard as well. But we were asked as council to find, find dollars, you know, we're going into a tough tax time going forward. So that's what I'm trying to do, find a few dollars, you know? If, if, if even one little motion goes through and sometimes you don't put motions forward to, um, to necessarily win them. You put them forward to have a discussion and the, you know, and maybe somebody else thinks, hey, you know, they get something out of the conversation or something that can be, um, helpful. I'm here to help the city. I'm here to, uh, help and respect administration and, uh, you know, other council members, but, um, I believe that at this particular time, um, my motion is, is solid. Let, let, let it, let the internal staff try. I'll leave it at that.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with Councilor Bromansky in favor. So that was a 28384 and now we're going back to Suzanne to, just so we can tie the utility RMR budget up with the bow. So, um, is she online? She was sitting in our lounge before, I don't know. Okay, so, uh, I don't know, do you have a presentation on this or is this just? Because there's no adjustments to what was presented to committee then. Okay. You're, yeah, you're, we can't hear you. Are you muted? Does it look like you're muted?
No, it's like a weird noise that it's happening.
I don't know, do we, do we need to, Diane, do we, we can just make the motion that's in our package?
Yeah, there's, there, there would be no presentation because there's, okay, changes from the original.
All right, so where are we? This is 8.5. So can I have a member of council make this motion? Council Hughes, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I just need the number. Or is it just say as approved? Okay, I can just do this. Okay. That the 10-year utility RMR capital plan provides an attachment to the June 7, 2022 agenda report be approved.
All right. We don't need the number. Okay, all right, but it's 41 million-ish. All right, so if that's a good motion?
Do I need motion number two, Mayor, or is it just motion?
Yeah, you can do them together.
Okay, that the following possible motion be approved, PM 23 dash zero two. The 2023 utility RMR capital budget of, can you give me the number of projects? And the amount?
Yeah, and it's, yeah, you, you don't have it in your chat then?
No, oh, sorry, let me just look here. Uh, eight projects be funded with the amount of 41,691,300,000 dollars.
There you go. Okay. Anything to add to that?
Uh, yeah, I just said 41,000 dollars, like, or 41 million, like it wasn't a large number. This is scary when we get used to using those large numbers. Um, no, I feel comfortable with what we're bringing forward here and I'm glad that we had the discussion. Um, I think that, um, especially when you're new, you don't necessarily know how everything works. And so this is in part an education session for people to actually understand, um, why administration brought forward what they did when they did. So it does take a bit of time, but I, I do appreciate that and I thank everybody for their input. That's it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes by majority with Council, Council Bromansky opposed. There were into 8.6, the Public Works Mobile Equipment Replacement Plan, PW 001, Council Bromansky.
That one was omitted.
It was omitted?
Yes.
Did I miss that? So you're not?
She submitted a, an email to withdraw that motion.
I didn't see the, the email to withdraw. Thank you.
I did it at the same time as the merge of the others.
Okay. Uh, and then 8.7, the Transit Bus Life Cycle Replacement Plan. Want to read that one in?
Sure. That the Transit Bus Life Cycle Replacement Plan, Trans 001, is removed from 2023 10-year municipal RMR capital plan.
All right, before I actually accept that, is there any questions? Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. Okay, so a quick question on this. I'm guessing that Counsel Ramensky is bringing it forward because we're merging into the regionalization. So my question is, why is it still on the books when we're intending to regionalize and move all of our assets into the corporation or organization or whatever it's called?
To the mayor, Counsel Hughes, we have Louise and Tom online who'd be able to answer those questions for you.
Actually, Tom, if you're there, I'll defer this to you or Will. They're both there.
Will is here. Tom, Tom is the expert on fleet. But if he, if I could maybe speak for him. The issue lies in that the, the commission hasn't been completely finalized. So it might be necessary to keep these items in the RMR. If there's a, a delay in the establishment of the commission or if there is some form of change to the commission, depending on what they present to us. And I'm talking about the commission people. So it may be necessary to keep these on until we've been merged into that committee once and for all or in that commission once and for all.
So I'm just hearing that because everything isn't finalized, everything isn't finalized yet, that we're just keeping it on the books for now. Is that right?
Well, the buses are reaching the, the, the end of their lives. They're costing more and more to, to maintain, which jeopardizes our ability to put out the whole deployment every morning. So we might need to, to purchase a couple of vehicles prior to us actually forming into the commission.
Okay, well, I'm curious to see how, when this all comes forward, how we're going to get credit for that. But that's not for today's debate. That's it, thank you.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, if I can add to that. The RMR budget is, is there to assist all departments in maintaining their service levels. And a good portion of the 2023 RMR is set for replacing our five original low-floor handy buses. And those handy buses are, are only growth transit at this point. We're seeing a 18% increase in registrants in handy bus service in the last five years. And these buses, we've extended twice their lifestyle, life cycles. And quite, quite frankly, quite frankly, we can't let them go any further. So that's where fleet season.
Thank you.
Sorry for not putting my camera on, I apologize.
It's okay. Counsel Ramensky, questions?
Yes, thank you, through Mayor to administration. When we just finished the 2022 budget, we had the plan for the transit. And now we're halfway through to the 2023 budget. And the 2024 amount for transit has jumped $1 million higher than a couple of months ago. The 2026 amount has jumped 2 million from a couple of months ago. The 2027, 4 million from a couple of months ago. We have 75,358,600 dollars on the books for buses, transit. I understand that, you know, in RMR, you need to repair, maintain and replace. But do we need to be replacing at this time? You just answered the question on the handy buses, but I mean, it was in the backgrounder that repairs need to be done. I understand that you want to make sure the buses arrive on time. But could you, you know, could this amount be lesser than what's put on the budget?
Madam Counsel, her, Madam Mayor and Counsel, good question, good points. As you know, we're, we're looking at the progressing to a zero emissions future. What that shows is that, of course, the zero emissions buses are, are twice the price of a, of a regular conventional diesel bus. So that adds to some of the expense. So we, we look at that. And then also what's happened is a regular articulated 60-foot diesel bus. It used to, it used to cost us $750,000. They're now upwards around 950,000. So, so mobile equipment and our mobile vehicles and equipment are, the prices have gone up substantially in the, in the last five years. And they continue to, they continue to do so. And what we're doing is we're, we're budgeting accurately to try and depict what is happening out there and what, what the future might, might involve us doing and the direction we're going to go. So and finance and fleet have done a lot of work into make sure that the, the numbers are accurate. So, but we still have a direction, we still have direction from above and executive leadership and, and Mayor and Counsel that we could, we could change a few things here and there, and we do on an active basis, so.
Hey, it's my understanding that fuel types will be changing. You know, you won't necessarily be going electric. There may be hydrogen. I know the railways are testing hydrogen already. So if you're buying buses and say that, you know, how are you deciding at this point in time which, which to put a bid on? Which type of bus?
That's a great question. And in the past, it's been based on grant funding. And it depends on, on provincial and federal grants. And, and, and we have to maintain our service levels in talking with all the big regional, or big regional partners and transits across Canada. What we're seeing is, we're seeing Toronto, for example, they're, they're just in a two-year study program for electric vehicles. In order to maintain their service levels, they're purchasing 563 hybrid buses. Not all electric at this time. They're, they're going to hold off for that for a bit. And that's what we do is we, there's many factors what we decide. We like to go electric, but there's also the grid capacity. So there's many factors that depend on this and I, I just, you know, I just can't speak to one. It's, it's a long conversation.
And another question, the EMTSC Business Plan and Model for Asset Plan is being provided soon. How soon? Are you aware of that?
I'll, I'll let Will speak to that.
Yes, they are, they're in the process of formulating that. We haven't been presented at this point with a, with a, a financial plan. We haven't been presented with the cost of the proposed service or the transition plan yet for assets. And the assets are fairly significant. We have our garage, we have our transit stations. So we haven't seen those figures yet. I, I won't, I wouldn't be able to answer that. They are presenting a preliminary plan to a board, to their board meeting on May 19th. I'm, I'm sorry, May 19th, on June 16th. And hopefully they will have framework that they'll be able to build on. But we haven't been presented with those numbers yet.
Okay, and what, what month would it be quarter for? Would it be December that you'd be, you know, placing your bids on purchases and so on? Or when, when does that take place?
There is a pretty significant timeframe from the time that you order a bus to the time that you actually take, take delivery on it. Tom, you may want to speak to that.
And, yes, correct, Will. The lead time for getting a bus from purchasing a bus to issuing appeal and, and receiving a bus depends on the type of bus. But we're, we used to see anywhere from six to 12 months. We're, we're now upwards up to two years in some respect on, on certain types of buses. So it's, it's, and that, and that goes sort of hand in hand with our RMR. We're trying to get, when we have the RMR approved and we, we put out the RFPs and tenders. We try and do it so that, that it's all set up towards the end of the year. And that way that, that we have a one or two-year window of, of receiving buses following that. But everything's changing in the procurement, procurement industry these days. And it's including the price, so it's affecting us all.
I do understand that, that it's a, you know, bad time to be buying that kind of thing and they're hard to come by. But if you do the POs for those buses and you're waiting like two years and say we're one year into Edmonton Metro, are we still responsible for paying for those buses at that time? When's, when's the amount paid is what I'm asking. You doing it full purchase order at the beginning or?
I believe that's something that would have to be worked out with the commission and specifically mentioned. If we purchase, if we put in an order for a bus and have paid for it, but haven't taken delivery, that has to be accounted for in their transition plan, absolutely.
And it's just, sorry, if I can just add, Madam Mayor and Counsel, also with grant funding, should we, should we adapt or acquire any type of grant funding in the future? That would be as part of the package as well.
Okay, and could you work with repair and maintain or do you have to replace at this particular time? In the handy buses?
We've, like I say, handy buses are critical to replace at this point. The transit buses actually for 2024, we've extended them already. But we do have a, a large amount of buses that we're going to need. Back in the, back in the day, St. Albert purchased 13 buses, one year, nine the next and seven the following year. So we purchased quite a few transit buses. And so those are going to have to be decided upon. You know, those are going to have to be purchased at some point. We do keep our buses 18-year lifecycle and we do a good job of that. But following the 18 years, they definitely start requiring attention.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Counsel Kilik.
Thank you. A couple of questions on clarification. So the, the original backgrounder said we're budgeting at, at the electric bus rate, even though we're replacing them with diesel buses. And that electric buses are twice as expensive. I paraphrased roughly what was worded there. Could, could somebody clarify what are we actually budgeting for? Because it?
Madam Mayor and Counsel, that's a great question. You, I can say that the funding is, is a concern for us is the question. We don't know, there, there's not 100% guaranteed that we're going to receive funding. We, we have, we have been given a, a direction from, from Counsel, Mayor and executive leadership to triangle zero mission as much as possible. And we like to do that. But you got to realize if we're going to purchase to the spring of 2026, potential for purchasing 25 more transit buses. So the 25 more transit buses, if we weren't, if for some reason the grant funding fails, then the taxpayer would be on the hook for the full amount. And so we're just portraying what the pot, potential full amount would be.
So this time around the 900,000 for 2023 is for what exactly?
2023 is, is for handy buses, is, is the handy bus purchases. And this is for some, it includes some in-house in diesel engine overhauls and transmission midlife changes. So, but the majority of it is handy buses.
Be four buses or?
Pardon me? Say again?
Or handy buses or three handy buses?
Well, we're going to need a total of five. So, yeah, so that's what we're replacing. And our five buses are 2012 and 2013s and 2014s. They had initially a seven-year lifecycle. And so we've extended them considerably.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've sort of been sitting here interested in, in the response. So what's your book out right now to maintain service on a regular basis?
We're, we're getting up to 48 conventional buses in our book out. We do have 60 on, on fleet total for conventional. And then we have seven pair of transit, seven handy buses. Quite a few times, as you know, we, well, you know, Wes said we have six maintenance bays. We always have six bays, six buses in the shop. So we're, our spare ratio is very low comparatively across the board. And, yeah, so we're doing a good job.
Sorry, Tom. Reason why I asked the question is that whether it's operated by the commission or operated by St. Albert Transit, you're still going to need 48 buses to provide the service that's going today.
Yeah, that's correct, 100%.
There you go. All right, so 18 years, that includes a refurb of the diesel engine transmission. But after 18 years, these buses have seen their life's work complete. Like these are, they're pretty much done.
Correct. At times we are able to move them a little bit plus or minus, but in the past, and, yeah.
So I guess the point in my question is, is that public transit, whether it's operated by the commission or whether it's operated by St. Albert Transit, you don't get it for free. You don't, a new bus for free, you don't get a refurbished bus for free and you don't provide transit for free. So the reality of it is, is that even though post conversion to the commission, there might be a rationalization of the fleet, you still need a fleet to service the St. Albert Transit plan.
That's correct.
Correct thing?
Yes, correct, Wes.
Thanks. And, and with that, plan requires the replacement of old worn-out buses.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, I see no more questions. So Counsel Ramensky, you want to proceed?
Okay, well, obviously I can't proceed with the motion, you know, the way it's listed because, you know, we do have to repair and, and maintain buses. So there needs to be dollar amounts there. The reason I left the wording the way it was is because I don't know what that number is, what the number, you know, what it can be. But I wanted clarification and the discussion if we need to be buying the buses. And I really wanted clarification on why we're paying into the, the whole regional transit and then paying into our own budget as well. So I see it, we're doing, we're paying into two different avenues, although they may merge. I just want to see the, you know, the motion cover off some of that loss for us when we do the transfer. So I don't know how to amend the motion. If there is a way, if not, I have to remove it as it is. But if, you know, you'd like to help me or someone would help me with?
What's, what, what do you, what do you intend, what's your intention behind the motion?
Well, the intention behind the motion would be to, you know, hold off major purchases until we know when the metropolitan region is taking over or until that report comes up or maybe present to us a new schedule when the actual budget comes to be rather than what's showing right now. Because we'll have that report by then. So I, I know you can't omit the line, but the line is not necessarily accurate.
We could come back to this during the regular budget in the fall, could we not? And that's when we actually approve, sorry. If, if, if there's information coming to now and budget in the fall that is required, we can have this motion come in the fall, right? Like there, there's nothing to stop us doing RMR stuff in the fall.
The only risk we have is that because the, the way the policy is written, it gives administration the ability to put out tenders and award contracts. So if, if so, if it had been pushed to a point where a contract had already been awarded, that would be, that would be the risk if it was, if it was looked at later, too late in the fall after some of that procurement work had happened. Okay. And I, I would have to defer back to transit to understand their timing on when they would, you know, they'd likely probably just be issuing RFPs. I don't know if they, they would have awarded by end of year or I'm not sure what the normal timelines are. I'd have to.
Do you guys have an answer on timelines?
Usually, we usually award a year before prior to receiving the bus. And it's been, some of the purchases have come a year and a half following. But what I can tell you is, is after 2023, on, on the books, we have three, three 40-foot buses to replace in 2024. The majority of buses are going to, purchases are going to happen 2025 on. So we do have a little bit of time there, potentially.
Okay, so do you want to revisit? Okay. So do you want to revisit this in the fall?
That would be good. Thank you.
All right.
Can I get a clarification then? But if we revisited in the fall around the timeline, because the purchase was for the handy buses, so if they were supposed to be purchased in 2023 and procurement, you'd probably have to be a year ahead. You would have to get your RFPs out before the fall, right?
It's out, it's already, closes this month.
Yeah. So we can't, we can't defer 2023 because you've already got your RFPs out.
Yep. But we're not, we're not touching this motion today. So it's all, it's all good.
Okay. But, okay. She's holding it off. But I mean, that's not holding up the money is what I'm saying.
No.
Cause if we don't approve on the end next big motion, isn't there?
Yep.
Yeah.
It'll, it, it'll still stay in.
As long as it's, as long as there's money in case they need to move it in there. That's all I'm worried about.
I think we're good.
Yeah. So the risk is just that if you, you're approving the money today to move ahead with the 2023 replacement of the handy buses. If you unapprove that money, try to unapprove that money later in the process, it will honestly depend where we're at within the procurement process, whether we actually even have the ability to do that. If we've awarded contracts already, we're legally obligated to, to continue with those contracts. So the timing.
I didn't know you actually awarded the contracts until we actually did the whole budget in the fall.
Uh, no, the policy allows us to award. What we can't do is we don't, we can't have delivery of the, of the goods until, until after the budget is approved. And that is written as, as clauses within the, within the contracts and within the awards that we can't accept delivery of a product or a service until after January first, until the full budget is approved.
Go ahead, Mike.
Question of clarification. Are we, is it within process that we issue an RFP before the budget is approved? Did?
So Counselor Killick, in our Budget Guiding Principles policy, this is actually the approval of the RMR budget. So we're actually approving a portion of the 23 budget today. Yeah. So it's, so it's not, it's, yeah, it's already approved. That's why we don't talk about it again in December, because this portion is actually already being approved.
Well, we're discussing it today and yet I heard the RFP was already issued. No? Did I not hear that?
The, the, the RFP is out right now for, waiting for proposals.
But it, the RFP would have language in it that says it's subject to, to budget approval, which is happening today. So if the budget approval happened today, we could, we could pull that back at this point. But once we've awarded the contract, that's when the kind of the hard deadline.
That just seems very bizarre to me that we would even be allowed to proceed with issuing an RFP before we knew the budget. Maybe I'm missing something here.
Yeah. No, I mean, the RFP, but I mean, there's no money awarded. I mean, obviously it's a subject to, right? I mean, so, I mean, yes, we're approving it right now, but the RFP has to vote because of procurement timelines, any number of issues that happened in relation to that, but it's always subject to, just sort of like, I'm going to put an offer on your house, but I'm going to make it subject to.
Yeah. Subject to council.
Okay. Thanks for that.
And as I said earlier, the RMR budget rarely gets touched. So it's been, it's been working.
Yeah. It, it, just, I guess a clarification, conditional offer, full of conditional offer.
Yeah. All right. 8.8 Information Technology Office Automation. Counselor Mesk, you want to read it in? Is that, is that our dinner? Okay. Why don't we take a break for dinner? Because it looks like it's not on any hot plates or anything. So getting cold. We'll take a break. Five twenty. Come back at five fifty. How far? Okay.
All right, we're good. Okay. Council Jolly, Council Hughes, you with us?
I am, I haven't seen Council Hughes.
It's only 5:49. Council Hughes, you there?
You betcha.
There we go, thanks. Okay. We are on to, we at 8.8? Information Technology Office Automation, that's where we're on? Go ahead, Council Remansky.
Thank you, Mayor Herron. You're almost done with me here. Okay, that the information technology IT office automation, ITSC 001 is removed from 2023 10-year municipal RMR capital plan.
All right, before I accept it, I'll ask if there's any questions on this one? Seeing no questions, oh, you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a few questions for administration. It says that in this actual process, there's an OA process prior to, prior to a seen request fulfillment, so when the $50,000 is gone, it's gone, so if someone needs something past that amount of time, it's just not supplied. Is that how it works?
I'll just refer this to Joanne Graham.
Sure, through the chair to Council Remansky. Yes, that is correct, and typically though, we have found over the last number of years, the 50,000 has actually been a perfect number. We have seldom had requests that we have not been able to fulfill.
Okay. And the other question I have is you have the other, the life cycle replacement plan that seems to replace the same items, why are they not merged as one when there's a council policy in the lifestyle replacement?
So the office automation program is slightly different. It is there specifically to allow for emergent needs throughout the year. So once, so for example, an emergent need may be that an iPad needs to be acquired, say for a new fire vehicle, that was not considered perhaps as part of a different capital project. So we would acquire the iPad through the office automation program, and then it would be added to the life cycle program for replacement. So the office automation are net new requirements, very Very often, they tend to be things such as tablets, peripherals, additional software licenses. And that is exactly the intent of the, of the program, to allow for those items to be purchased. Then they would be added to the subsequent and appropriate life cycle project.
Okay, and you normally use the 50,000 each year or very close to, is what you're saying?
Very close to that. And in fact, this year, we are currently at 34,242 expended in that capital project.
Okay, and at the end of the year, do you request, you know, or send out notice to anyone that, you know, that there's still budget there to use it up? Or do you just normally leave it?
No, we typically, we intentionally have it there for emergent needs, not necessarily to be fully consumed every year. It's need-driven.
Okay, and then it said if that fund was removed, it would come from the expenditures from individual departments. Why did you go away from that means of doing things?
Why did we institute the fund as opposed to it coming through individual departments? Yes, so that is primarily to allow us to provide some standardization in the technology that we produce, or that we procure, rather. So in my experience here, and as well as my experience in other municipalities, if the, if it's purchased directly through the departments, you will very often find that you start losing standardization in the technology that you're purchasing. And as soon as you start diverging and purchasing different types of products, your efforts to maintain those products does increase. So this allows us to keep that standardization. It also allows us to make sure that there isn't another solution that may, that we may already have that would meet the need of the department. So centralizing it also makes sure that we purchase what is needed, which sometimes is slightly different than what is asked for.
Okay, that's all my questions, and thanks.
You're welcome. All right, excuse me. I see no more questions, so Council Remansky, I'll accept your motion, go ahead.
Mayor Herron, sorry, Sheena and I are not able to hear.
Sorry.
Pardon?
Council Hughes and I aren't able to hear chambers right now. I don't know, maybe Council Remansky's mic isn't on?
It's on, I'll repeat it now.
We're unmuted. That's okay, can you hear now?
That the IT Information Technology IT Office Automation, ITSV 001 is removed from 2023 10-year municipal RMR capital plan.
All right, I accept that, go ahead.
Okay, I just see it as, again, looking at, at cost factors here. And it's $50,000 a year over 10 years is $500,000 when we're going into a tight budget year again. And I just saw it as repetition in the, in the replacement, in the motion of the replacement IT, which is the next, next motion that I have going forward. So I don't have to elaborate on it so much. I just find that it's a fund that's, that's only there on a first-come, first-served basis. So it could go over at times, it's, it's, it's not always dedicated to those who always need it.
All right, seeing, oh, sorry, Council Mackay, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna support the motion. And I'm, and I figure, I'm just gonna let you know why. I mean, I think the, you asked some really good questions of administration, Council Remansky. And about the responses provided by admin were, were actually right on, right on spot as to what the, the purpose of this amount was for. And believe me, being in organizations where you allow individual entities within the organization to go out and then just purchase what they think they need, and then come back to IT and say, I bought this thing, you need to fix it because it no longer works anymore, or it no longer ties into, or I'm not able to tie it into the network. And then you realize that you spend way more money than $50,000 trying to fix something that a really easy, simple little line budget item would have in the RMR. And, and so I, I, I really believe that administration has done a really good job of going back over time and looking at what some of the problems have caused in around their repair, maintain, and replacement. And this is just a really good example of spending a little bit of money upfront and saving a large amount of money and issues later on. So that's why I'm not gonna support.
Okay, I see no one else on debate, Council Remansky to close.
Okay, to close on this one, I just saw it as a duplication in the, the Information Technology Lifestyle Replacement Plan. So I believe that departments could request the, you know, the proper equipment through the other plan, rather than have, having two plans running side by side. So I agree that, you know, you need the proper equipment, but when the people need it, they need it, not just if it falls within that $50,000 and someone else hasn't used it up. Just trying to streamline the two processes. And that's all I have.
All right, I'll call for the vote. That motion fails with Council Remansky in favor. At 8.9 is the Information Technology Life Cycle Replacement Plan. Go ahead, Council Remansky.
Speaker again, thank you, Mayor. That the Information IT Life Cycle Replacement, ITSV 002 is reduced by $50,000 per year.
Okay, before I accept that, I'll let, anyone ask any questions? Seeing no questions, I accept your motion, go ahead and on debate.
Of course, I brought this forward because I'm reducing the $50,000 from the other, other thing, item that we just went through and failed. So we're still at the same dollar base I wanted to achieve. IT services perform lifestyle asset replacement per council policy, CFS 01, which was established a reserve for that. So the reserve for that I can see being in place, but having the extra separate funds for it, I don't see as being in place. It has in the policy as exists, mobile telephones replaced every two years, laptops, tablets, rugged devices every three years. So everything's replaced, you know, fairly often compared to what I'm used to in the private sector. So I think that, again, saving $500,000 in equipment that could come out of one reserve that was dedicated for that purpose is the reason that I'd like it reduced by that amount.
Council Hughes, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I'm going to support this one because of the cellphone. The replacing over two years, I think we could probably push it to three. And I think that many times, we may not need to have city cell phones, separate numbers. So you can get a separate line on your regular cellphone, for example, and it costs a lot less than having a, a separate line altogether, or a separate phone. So there could be some cost savings there that I think if it was challenged would be possible. And so I'm willing to, to do it for one year and see what happens and, and see if there's another way that we can look at it. So for that reason, I think I will support this one.
All right, excuse me, anyone else on debate? Seeing none, Council Remansky to... Go ahead, Council Killick.
I'll, I'll also be supporting this again. Essentially, that Counselor Hughes said it, I think the cellphone replacement on a two-year schedule is incredibly aggressive. And I'd like to see if that could be at least extended and whether it through approval of this motion to reduce it by $50,000 or if there was some other more process-related way to address that, to, to change it to a three-year cycle than a two-year cycle. That would also be acceptable. But I think the way the motion's been worded here today to reduce it based on that, I would support it.
Council Mackay?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna support this because, I mean, it's clear that, I mean, we're getting down into the weeds here in relation to it. I'm, I mean, yes, we could say we could replace them every two years. I've had this since I was elected in 2017, five years, six years. It still works, I gotta change the font now because I'm old, I need bigger font, but I can do that. I don't need, I don't, I mean, these are just guidelines. And I think they're put forward by our subject matter experts that work within the city and know what our system needs are, knows what the equipment needs are, or what our users demonstrate that they need them for. And I, I honestly, my friends that are in the private industry, IT costs are their, other than salary costs, are probably one of their number one costs because they need to maintain a strong information management system and IT system to remain profitable and competitive. So I'm, I'm, I, I see no reason to not support administration's background or information as this is not a viable option for them because otherwise, we will end up with unreliable and failure of our, of our equipment. And yes, we can cherry pick and go on there and pick out a whole bunch of items, but now is not the time to do that. Bring forward a motion saying you need to, you think we should look at something else in any number of, of areas, but not tonight.
Council Jolly?
Thank you, just really briefly, I'll echo Council Mackay's comments. You know, in my four and a half years, I think this is the most in the weeds that I've, I've ever seen this council get on this last, I don't know, hour and a half. And, and I, I really think that our plans need to support the sustainability and the success of the municipality, which is why I'm not supporting this motion.
Thank you, and I'll just kind of echo what I said at the beginning. You know, you can reduce it by $50,000, you're not actually directing them to not buy cell phones every two years. It's still up to them what they do. So if, you, think higher level. If you want them to only replace cell phones every three years, make a policy change. But this is not direct in policy, this is just taking 50 grand randomly out of the budget. And, yeah, that's why I, I won't be supporting either because these, these one-offs are just not really the appropriate way to be trying to interject what your beliefs are into our, into our processes. So, Council Remansky to close.
I'm not injecting my beliefs into this. I'm seeing it as still spending $700,000 a year on IT. That's a large amount of money instead of 750,000. And in a few years down the road, I think the last four of the budget, it's going up to $800,000 a year, 850. Still a lot of money. $50,000 a year over 10 years, $500,000, a lot of money. A lot of things we want to do right now, you know, a lot of plans we have for the city. If, if I saw things, you know, in a budget that I didn't see anything that I felt could be corrected, then I would wholeheartedly vote it. But I mean, we're, I'm digging in the weeds because we need to be digging in the weeds right now. We have, we have projected tax increases and budgets coming up that we've been told are unsustainable for specific projects we want to do. So it's the little things that add up. And, you know, maybe I'm digging in the weeds, but I'm digging in the weeds for the citizens. So I'm trying my best. And, you know, 500,000 over 10 years is, is, is good, good, good return, right? So I hope to have support in this. I still think we'll have, you know, we still have huge spending on IT. We have a good system, we can maybe replace. It's like, you know, when we got the cutting lawn one extra, you know, week later and we saved, you know, money. Well, you know, let that cellphone go one more year and, and save some money. I'm trying to save money for the people as well, so, thank you.
Call for the vote? Voting's closed. That motion fails with Council Remansky, Hughes, and Killick in favor. So we're on to the 810, which is the 10-year municipal RMR capital plan. Assuming there's no presentation, I just need somebody to make the motion on page...
We'll just be waiting for lunch to fill in the, in the numbers.
Okay, pardon? Okay, Council Mackay's got it?
Yeah, once the numbers get presented, I can do number one. All right, that the 10-year municipal RMR capital plan, provided as an attachment to the June 7, 2022 agenda report be approved.
Is that the only piece of it?
No, there's a number two, but I don't have the numbers yet.
Let's get them both in at once.
I just need the numbers for number two when they're ready. And number, I guess, and that the... Sorry, I gotta go down here. That the 2023 municipal RMR capital budget of 26 projects be funded in the amount of 24,138,600.
All right, anything further on that?
No, no comments.
Call for the vote? Voting's closed. That motion passes with Council Remansky opposed. 9.1 was on consent, so we're just changing the date of our org meeting, it's in the package. Because as per some comments that are procedure bylaw, I'm not gonna read every one of these consent motions in because especially if they're minor. So I need, 9.2 is appointment of the chief administrative officer. Says that I'm presenting it, I just noticed that. So I can't actually make the motion, but, you know, after two or three, how many ever months? Search, we have selected Mr. William, otherwise known as Bill Fletcher, to be the next chief administrative officer of the City of St. Albert. I'll get somebody to make the motion right away, but before we get there, I just want to thank Mr. Hiltz for filling in on an unexpected leave by Mr. Scobal. We weren't prepared for that, and we tapped him on the shoulder, and he has served us great. So appreciate that, Kiri. Looking for somebody to make the motion? Go ahead, Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved out William H., Bill Fletcher be appointed chief administrative officer effective June 13, 2022. That from the effective date of his appointment, Mr. Fletcher shall have all the powers, duties, and responsibilities of a chief administrative officer under any statute or regulation of the province of Alberta and under any bylaw or council policy of the City of St. Albert.
Awesome, any opening comments?
Madam Mayor, you said it all.
Did I? Okay. Council Remansky?
I just do have one comment for this one. I respect that council decisions are made by majority vote, and I wish the new CAO the best of success and the best of success for the city going forward. I appreciate unity of council, but I also the ability of individual voting that municipal politics for elected individuals to best represent all varied public views. I will maintain to the public my vote as it was during the final council vote in camera and will not be supporting this decision. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that one passes by majority with Council Remansky opposed. Moving on to, the next two items are on consent. There are time extensions for St. Thomas, 20 St. Thomas Street. And then the evaluation of the standing committees were delayed a bit. Reasons are in the backgrounders. 9.5, City of Airjury proposed resolution for Alberta municipalities. We have Mr. Trevor Dooley, do we have Trevor?
Yep, good, good evening, council.
Oh, you're still here? Or no, you're home.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll be quick on this one. City of Erdre council unanimously seconded all three of city councils' resolutions on May 16. And they've got a proposed resolution that they're looking for a second or four. It's regarding transportation infrastructure funding, essentially calls for enhancing transparency and alignment regarding provincial funding for transportation projects. At St. Albert, we have a long history of engaging with Alberta Transportation regarding matters of mutual interest and moving forward with the EMRB's Integrated Regional Transportation Master Plan. We're also looking forward to participating in the province's upcoming Edmonton Region Network Study. So seconding this resolution allows it to be debated at the convention floor and to seek continual enhanced collaboration with Alberta Transportation and evidence-based decision-making. So that's it.
Pardon?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, do we need to identify a individual to of council?
Be the champion?
To speak on it while at council?
No, we don't need to.
Okay, I just thought we did in the other three.
Those because they were our motions. Right. Okay, so any questions for Mr. Dooley other than that one? All right, Counsel Mackay, go ahead.
That council seconded the City of Erdre's proposed 2022 Alberta municipalities resolution regarding transportation infrastructure funding provided as an attachment to the June 7, 2022 agenda report entitled City of Erdre Proposed 2022 Alberta Municipalities Resolution: Transportation Infrastructure Funding.
All right, anything to open on your debate?
No, I mean, the great comments by Mr. Dooley. I, I, they're wealth in the background and it really ties in with our strategic plans. So going forward, it would be whoever speaks on this as a seconder, I think it'll be important for our, not only St. Albert, but our region.
Great. I see no one else wanting to jump in debate. Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. Mr. Dooley, we should probably have put that one on consent. All right, the next one was also on consent, which was a, we received some money from the provincial government through the Alberta Community Partnership Program, $450,000, which is, I think, quite significant for the CED project. And now we're on to the guaranteed bylaw for the EMTS. So is there a presentation on this or just want to go straight to the vote? Trevor?
Madam Mayor, I have just, just new pieces of information since this was identified at the April 19 council meeting. City of Edmonton council provided second and third reading on May 24 and then city administration advertised the bylaw in accordance with MGA requirements and no petitions were received.
Okay, so thank you for that. That's good to know. Counsel Broadhead, do you want to make these motions? I see, because I see no questions.
Would love to, Madam Mayor. That bylaw 19 slash 2022 to amend by law 93 slash 2021, the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Service Commission loan guaranteed bylaw be read a second time.
Point of order, I think you said 93, it's 39.
Okay, it says 39.
Dyslexic apparently tonight. Bylaw 39 slash 2021, thank you.
Thanks. All right, call for the vote. Oh, wait, Counsel Hughes, sorry, I saw your hand up.
It's okay, don't worry about it. Um, I just definitely, I don't, I'm not going to be supporting this tonight. Just gonna take this off so I can't hear myself talk. I just, I really feel like other municipalities should be taking some of this debt load. We're basically co-signing lines of credit on a board that I have no idea still how any of this happening. I'm not involved at all. I'm not the representative. All the details still need to be ironed out and we just keep going further and further into co-signing and debt and risk on this organization. And so I really think it's time for other municipalities that are in this to start ponying up some of the risk and not just City of Edmonton and City of St. Albert as the two volunteers. So I realize it's only a $500,000 additional agreement to get into it and we're putting ourselves further and further, are feeding to the cement. So I just, at some point I have to say I've had enough and quite frankly, I've had enough. I've had enough of this, of only relying on two municipalities to keep this going and take on all the risk of this organization that is, is forming. I don't even know what happens with all of our assets or how anything else is happening. There's so many questions out there of what's happening. The only thing I do keep seeing is to increase the line of credit. So just, just so councils aware, that's why I will not be voting in favor of this. Thanks.
Anyone else on debate? Seeing none, anything to close?
Absolutely, I'd like to close on that. Make no mistake about it, St. Albert and Edmonton are putting forward the loan guarantee. Should they have to be retired, all municipal members of the commission will be required to retire the debt. This is not a burden on St. Albert and Edmonton alone. It is a matter of convenience more than anything.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion passes by majority with Counsel Bramansky and Counsel Hughes opposed. No emergent items.
Third reading, Mayor?
Thank you.
Third reading, yeah. Remove that bylaw 19 slash 2022 be read a third time.
Thank you for that. Anything further?
Nothing.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. Oops, passes by majority with Counsel Hughes opposed. Okay. So no information items today. We do have two council motions, Counselor Killick. I'll let you read yours into the record.
Actually, Madam Mayor, under item 12, information items, just general question for administration.
We'll read it in.
Okay.
And then I won't accept it and then we'll go into questions.
He was asking about the fact around that he's got an information request?
Yeah, that's, that's 14. Agenda item 14 is information requests.
Okay.
Yeah. Information items is a placeholder in case they just have a, a report that we don't require to make a decision, it's just for our information. But we had nothing today. Okay, so read your motion on the green bins into the record.
Now it's gone.
It's nice having another old person on this council.
Yeah. Where did it go? Maybe they can make, there, thank you. My apology. That administration, following the waste composition study and public consultation in Q4 of 2022, bring forward for council consideration by Q1 2023, recommendations beyond curbside education to reduce amount of contamination in the green bin program as identified in the Waste and Diversion Report dated February 2022, page 14, provided to council on March 16, 2022.
All right, before I accept that, I'm going to go to questions. So I have Zoom. I've got Counsel Jolly with a question.
Yeah, thank you. So to administration, reading the background, I got the sense that if this motion passes, really there would be no change to what administration already has planned. Is that accurate?
The chair to Counsel Jolly, that is correct. However, I have Louise Stewart online. If you'd like to elaborate, Louise, anything beyond, that's, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, thank you for the question through the merit of Counsel Jolly. That is essentially correct. So because we had a bit of delay over COVID with the single-use item strategy and we've identified the contamination that's going in the green bin back in 2020, we were already proceeding down the road to do an actual waste contamination study. And so I know when Counsel Killick had originally brought this forward, I did have a conversation with him that we were doing this study and that's why I believe his motion reflects that the report would come after this study is completed.
Great, thank you. And the, the Q1 mentioned in the motion, that's achievable for administration?
Yeah, absolutely. Our, the, the main feeder of some of the information we're going to get will be completed by the end of September and then we will just compile the information and come up with strategies. We've done two different cultivate the conversations. So we certainly have the public feedback on the route they'd like to go. And based on the contamination study, we will have a really better understanding on where to target, both location-wise within the city, but certainly what the contamination is, is that's occurring within the bins.
Thanks so much.
Counsel Mackay?
Thank you very much. Just question to administration and thank you very much, Counsel Killick, for bringing forward this because there's a great deal of information that I think I wasn't really totally aware of. So I appreciate the background. But my question to administration is, is so, I mean, the intention or one of the actions going forward is to hire a contractor to conduct curbside waste composition studies of like our residents, but is somebody checking on our contractor? I mean, because right now they're identifying if there is contamination and they will dump it in the landfill. But I mean, are, are we having any checks with the actual contractor that they're not just dumping it into the landfill without, without any due diligence? Just because of the weight or because of the rate differences?
So, so to Counsel Mackay through the mayor. So the, the contractor doesn't gain or lose by having a contaminated load. The cost of that contamination is passed on to the city. It's the city that pays for either the, the compost going to the compost or the compost going to the landfill. So what the contractor is doing is when they're dumping, they are getting a physical view of what's in there. So they, they can tell if a load, they, they've done this long enough that they can tell if it's over 30%. But what originally sparked this was Rose Ridge approaching us, indicating to us that our compost was highly contaminated. Conversation started back in 2020. In 20, in the fall of 2020, we actually went out and watched these loads coming into Rose Ridge and went through them and could verify the contamination. In 2021, there was certainly a targeted campaign on the 10 most common contamination items. Hasn't really had a lot of success. So now we are actually doing the waste composition studies so that we are managing all three streams and looking at what's contaminating in garbage that shouldn't be there, that could be put into compost, what's in compost that shouldn't be there and what's in the blue bag that, that shouldn't be there as well. So we're looking at all three streams, coming up with an action plan, which would likely include enforcement at this point. So the, the contractor is, is quite knowledgeable in what they're doing and we have verified that on, in the ground, in, on the field at Rose Ridge.
Yeah, thank you. I, I wasn't necessarily implying dishonesty, but I wanted to make sure that we were certainly doing our due diligence. But you did mention the 10 top and I don't think I saw it in the background or not, not going on your total memory, but what are some of the top five contaminations of, that we find?
So the green bin top, one of, some of the top contaminants are just black garbage bags. People using their green bin when their, when their garbage bin is overfilled. So they just stick in the excess. That is exceptionally common. Certainly plastic bags, the Safeway bags, the Walmart bags, that type of thing. Seeing those, luckily those are being reduced with the stores no longer offering them. We get a lot of food packaging items, people that don't want to open expired food will just throw the entire package within their green bin as opposed to disposing of the package in the garbage and just keeping the food in the compost. And a lot of to-go items that people have the impression that say a Tim Hortons cup is recyclable and it's not.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Counsel Hughes and then Counsel Broadhead.
Hey Louise, I'm gonna, don't go too far. I, so when I read this motion, the one thing I'm trying to figure out is, is it actually anything different than what you're planning to bring forward at the end of your report? Or, or are we really, my concern is that the timing of this is not necessary, that really this motion should be after we see what you guys have brought forward to determine if there's more needed, as opposed to assuming that we need more before we've even seen the report. You guys haven't even written the report yet. So were you really planning to address this anyway in your report at the end of Q4?
I, I believe the report at the end of Q4 will actually refer to the entire program as a whole, what we do for the curbside education, some of what's going on with the region. This specific report is, I actually don't mind it being a very specific report because I do believe enforcement, which would be, could get the public reacting in a way that they don't want to react. The public is actually asking for enforcement, but that's going to be a very specific, that we have to be very transparent about what neighborhoods we're going to, what the fines are, how did certain, how did the very first person ever get picked to get the, to get the fine? That would all be very, we'll lay that out in detail in this specific report, whereas that, those kind of details wouldn't necessarily be captured in the year-end program report.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Broadhead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Louise, can you tell me, like, I mean, there's, there's significant technology out there that would be able to sort of monitor a load going into the green truck? And with geo-tagging, could we not just tag it to a, a residence? And then do enforcement that way? Is that part of what's going to be investigated going forward? Or, or is this more a, you know, boots on the ground and, and rummaging through the garbage before it goes into the green bin? How's that going to work?
I think right now it, it is certainly the latter. It's the boots on the ground. The technology does exist. Saskatoon has a fantastic program where they actually have cameras on the, on the vehicles that as the bin is dumped, it, it can tell what's in it and if it's contaminated or not. We're not aware of the cost of that program yet. We also have independent GFL contractors that would do it, that we'd have to ask them to set up their vehicles that way. So we're not prepared at this point to bring forward. It would have to be a charter to, to go forward with that kind of cost. So what we've been trying to do right now is to just try and teach people and we have a lot of buy-in from a lot of public, but we also have just a lot of people that don't want to invest into a second green or a second garbage bin and are just using their green bin. We see it far more in the winter than we do in the summer. And we also, we've seen it a lot through COVID. We have garbage being generated at home that would have normally been generated at a workplace. So we're hoping that household garbage actually drops again. We have a very good diversion rate for garbage, but we just, it's now contaminating the organics. And certainly technology to verify that will be coming in the future.
All right, fair enough. It's, it's discouraging, I guess, that a community that's got an intent to portray itself as an environmentally conscious community has that kind of contamination in our recycle program. But anyway, thank you.
Counsel Bramansky and then Counsel, oh, Jolly, you're good?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Bramansky?
Okay, hello Louise. I did, you know, see your presentation prior and the only thing that concerns me is, you know, there are those people that are throwing in the, you know, the food packages and I remember the toilet in the presentation was quite unusual, but anyhow. You know, there's people doing that, but then there's the other side of the public that's really trying hard, but there's just something they don't know, like maybe the soil from a plant or something like that. So I just, I just wonder if the, you know, the education part has been strong enough that I'd hate to be finding people, you know, that aren't doing something that they know is wrong. There's those people, but I'd like to believe they're a small portion of the public. So how long would you think in edu, how long's your education program been going on?
Oh, I, the curbside waste education program, actually, it, it started in a number of years ago. I don't actually want to put a date on it. It's certainly grown stronger and stronger every year because even our supervisor right now of, of waste management has a degree in environmental programs. They, they've gotten better each and every year. She hires a casual staff that goes out with her. She hires a casual staff that goes out with her and she physically goes and looks. She's not digging, but she'll lift the lid and look and takes pictures. Not generally the pictures you see in the report. And we'll try and put stickers down. Where I think there's some confusion and where we can certainly get better with education is, is what may say compostable on the actual product may not be compostable for us. And so our compost pile goes to Rose Ridge. It is on top of the ground. It sits, they roll it over. It's just like your backyard composter. It can't necessarily compost those kind of materials versus the compost site in Calgary where it's internal, it generates heat, it breaks down stuff much quicker and generates a good compost that way. So they can take potentially different items than what we can take. And I think that's where we have a good educational opportunity. They are out there, they're putting stickers on, they're knocking on doors, they're trying to let everybody know. And I would agree that ninety percent of the residents are fantastic and they certainly make an extremely strong effort. It only really though on one load of garbage or one load in a garbage truck, it takes one or two, you know, garbage cans within there. If they're fully contaminated, now you're at a thirty percent load that's contaminated. So it can be one guy that spilled it with, you know, shingles and construction materials, and it can ruin the entire load.
Right. I'd like to maybe see a warning, you know, a warning then a fine kind of thing, if that's a direction you would go. So at least someone could be educated as one morning and then you're fine.
Yeah, a hundred percent agree, which is why, as I said before, I do think this, having this as a separate report is probably a good idea. Because I think there'll be, potentially there's going to be some unhappy people about this, especially the first few. So we can, we can manage our approach and present counsel with some options as to how we would go about that.
Thank you.
All right, I see no more questions. Accept your motion, Counsel Killik. Go ahead on opening arguments.
Thank you. It's interesting to note that our current bylaw has in it that if people put anything other than the compostable materials in the green bin, they can be fined a hundred dollars. So that's already in our existing bylaw. I think also that educate, we've been educating people for many years through the orange sticker when we don't pick up the green bin, when we have our Waste Wise app that we publicize all the time to try and tell people, you know, what should go where. And yet, in light of all that, we still have a very few, few people that will, for example, at Christmas, put their excess Christmas wrapping in the green bin because at Christmas their brown bin is full of other garbage. So even when we look at the December or November, December and January months, it was almost a hundred percent of the bins that were inspected were contaminated. And it only takes, as we heard from Administration, two or three bins to go into that whole truck. Then it's contaminated to the point where it is no longer put into composting, but it's diverted at Rose Ridge to the dump. And that to me seems to be a real shame, that two or three kind of, if we would say bad apples, it can wreck a whole rest of the neighborhood from being successful at, at being environmentally good stewards and trying to do their best with green bin recycling. So I think we've had a long enough cycle of education through our Waste Wise app. You know, inspections and do not pick up stickers. Unfortunately, it is a cost to residents as well. When we divert that truck from the compost side over to the dump side, it costs us fifteen dollars more per load. So there is a direct cost to all residents when a few don't follow the rules. So my hope, as well as their significant environmental impact. When that load of compostable material goes over to the dump site, it is buried and then gives off methane gas. And as we all know, methane gas is more than twenty times harmful to greenhouse gas and greenhouse warming or climate warming than CO2. So it's, it's really a, you know, kind of a double whammy. It costs us more money. It's not good for the environment, and in fact, it's significantly worse for the environment when it produces greenhouse gas on the methane side. So my hope on this motion is that we do our waste composition study, a holistic view of it, that we can come back to counsel with some recommendations as to how we can better manage. Not enforcement, but really encouragement of all residents to do a much better job with, with green bin. Getting the right thing in the right bin, I guess, probably brown, green and blue. But in particular, focus on, on green. So other municipalities have all municipalities that I could find have the same challenges. There will always be someone putting the wrong thing in, in the wrong bin. But other municipalities and just one that came to mind, Reno, they will stop, they will pull your green bin and you're, don't get the luxury of being able to put your grass clippings in a green bin if you have two or three warnings that you don't follow. So there are, are ways that we can and I don't want to be prescriptive to what Administration comes back with by any means, but there are ways that we can encourage our residents to do a better job on behalf of all residents. So that's what I hope that this motion and with admin support of their, their waste study will come back with some recommendations for counsel's consideration. And that's what I hope this motion accomplishes.
All right, Counsel Jolly, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, every once in a while we get these motions, these council motions that really show how aligned a member of council can be with Administration to the point where they beat us to the project. And I'm so excited when I, when I see that council is really on the same page as Administration, which I really see with this motion. I'm supporting this motion, not because I think it's going to change the direction of administrative activities, but because I think it really sheds light on a disappointing program or problem in St. Albert. It's important that we shed light on this sooner than later. Although we don't have those solutions laid out in a report right now, even talking about it here helps us spread the word that this is not okay. This is costing utility payers money because of the increased costs. And it's also really setting us back in term, in terms of our environmental priorities. So I'm happy to support it and to get the word out there that this needs to change.
Counsel McKay.
Yeah, I'm just gonna echo the previous comments. And I mean, I, we just came back from Regina and I was able to tour their waste management facility. And very similar to Saskatoon, Louise, you'll be happy to hear that Regina is actually, their contractor actually puts cameras. But I guess all that does is it just tells the operator that their load is contaminated and now they have to drive to the landfill versus actually going to a facility that'll sort. Because that's all they do. They landfill or they, they do sort if it's truly not contaminated. But like Counsel Jolly identified, and like I think the intent of Counsel Killik was, is just to raise the public's awareness. I remember in 2018, Mayor Herron, you and I, along with the Olivia Quark, who is the manager of the program at that time, we went around in Sturgeon. And if you want to get people's attention at eight in the morning, get, start going through their garbage. They tend to get a little nervous about what you're doing. Reminded me of my drug days when I was going through garbage looking for proof. So
You had drug days?
My, my drug investigation.
Thank you.
My drug days, my drug days was worried about looking for scrap pizza. Anyways, but I think that I'm, I'm in all seriousness, I think it's very important that the information that I'm like that Administration has even provided in the background will be useful education and informing our residents. So I appreciate both counsel and I appreciate Counsel Killik's bringing this forward so that we can, we can see that we're really in tune and that we've recognized the concerns and the problems and and hopefully we'll arrive at a solution that will educate more so than enforce, but we all realize that we all, we have to have that option in our toolkit. So thank you very much, Counsel Killik. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Administration.
I encourage everyone to do a walk along on a early morning and do that. Counsel Killik to close?
Thank you. The reason this motion is so aligned with Administration is I had the opportunity to talk to them prior. So just shows the power, I guess, of working together. And clearly, this one got my interest. I was just horrified and very dismayed to see the level of contamination, and it prompted me to bring this forward. So I hope we can come back with some really good, strong recommendations on how we can move beyond education and get a better result for all residents of St. Albert. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion passes unanimously. All right, Counsel Hughes, thirteen point two is your non-residential recreation user fees. I know you've slightly reworded it, so why don't you read your new wording into the record and then we'll go to questions.
Sure, thank you. Okay, that, let me just make it bigger because it's not showing all of my pages. The cities in Albert invite all surrounding municipalities to enter into an intermunicipal collaboration agreement or equivalent that do not already have one in place the city. That effective April first, twenty twenty-three, the cities in Albert implement non-resident recreation user fees and charges for programs and services which are higher than those charged to non-residents, with the exception of those non-residents from municipalities that have an intermunicipal collaboration framework, memorandum of understanding or other partnership or contribution agreement pertaining to recreation that benefits both the city and the other party. And these fees are maintained until such time an intermunicipal collaboration framework or equivalent is established that municipality. I'm busy drowning. Okay, now that I am no longer straining myself. That Administration bring forward a back report to counsel by the end of Q4, twenty twenty-two with an update on the agreement status with surrounding municipalities and implementation plan, fee schedule and applicable programs and services if agreements cannot be formed with all affected municipalities.
All right, open it up for questions now. Counsel? Wow, no questions? Okay, I accept your motion, Counsel Hughes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I, just so people are at home and everywhere else that happens to watch, this is clear. Our goal is to make sure that we have intermunicipal collaboration agreements. And one of the challenges we had is the province wanted, insisted that we have it with all other municipalities and then withdrew it from many of them. And I honestly believe that we need to have an agreement with the other municipalities that we are sharing services with, whose residents are using ours and we're using theirs. Many times, it's not a balanced proportion. We have a lot of services that surrounding municipalities enjoy that are using it, and our taxpayers are currently subsidizing it. So we basically, our taxpayers are paying for other people who are not paying Snapper taxes to use our facilities. And so what we'd like to see, or what I'd like to see, is that we do have agreements with each one of these municipalities that surround us, and that we look to make sure that we are not subsidizing the use for other municipalities to use our services. So what I want, the first part in this thing is that we, first of all, we invite everyone to do this. We're not trying to exclude anyone. I'm trying to make sure that every municipality that will be affected has an opportunity to reach out and talk to us and, and try to form some sort of an agreement. And the second one is that if we're unable to, then we will be required to do non-resident fees. And that way we are representing our taxpayers and our residents first. We are putting hundreds of thousands of dollars a year right now into other municipalities using our services and at just to their benefit, without having any responsibility for any of the ongoing maintenance or any of the other items that our taxpayers are currently paying for. So I think that it's first of all, recognition of what's going on. And then the second thing is to make sure that we understand that when we're looking at seven percent tax increases, when we're looking at a potential twenty-three percent cumulative tax increase between last election and the next election, unless we find savings, that we can't afford to continue to subsidize without having any agreement that we actually want to have this done. And so this is about opening the door for open discussion. It's about making sure that we have agreements with other organizations. And it's about ensuring that we're putting our residents first when we look at the actual costs to providing these services in the recreation facilities. So I feel like that's, I guess I'll leave it with that to start. Oh, and before I be, we do have, like, some people are maybe worried right now that we couldn't go into Edmonton. We do have a recreation agreement with Edmonton right now. So this is not going to affect our ability to go back and forth with Edmonton and to do exchanges from the recreation facilities. They can use ours, we can use theirs. That's already been determined. So I'll leave it at that for now. Thanks.
All right, anyone else on debate? Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly appreciate the item one that you, the precursor to the to clause two and three, I think, puts everything into perspective for me. The idea is, we want to have a relationship with our neighbors, but we also need to represent, to your point, Counsel Hughes, those who elected us to office. So to me, the best result is at the end of the day, we have agreed upon collaboration agreements between all our neighboring municipalities and and we all are feeling comfortable about how that works. And so appreciate the motion, Counsel Hughes. I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Counsel Broadhead. Anyone else on debate? Wow, it's a quiet group. Call for the vote. Oh, sorry, Counsel Hughes, anything to close?
Yeah, this is just about providing clarity. So this isn't necessarily that there's going to be massive charges for any municipality that goes into it with us. It's about providing clarity of services and an understanding. So sometimes there's unwritten rules and sometimes it helps to put them in writing so that everyone understands exactly how each party's benefiting. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Call for the vote now. Voting is closed and that passes unanimously. I thought there would be a long conversation about that one. Okay. Information requests, notice of motions and announcements. Well, we know that Counsel Killik has an IR, so do you want to read it in?
Yep, thank you. I sent it to alleged services, so I don't know if they have it up there, but I can just read it in off what I sent in. That Administration prepares a report for the feasibility of, one, doing a pilot project to do low-impact removal of historical man-made sediment from the river at one high-impact location. Two, that the location be focused on environmental versus aesthetic improvements to the health of the river. Three, that any possible alternative funding sources, grants be identified. And four, that the regulatory approval process be quantified and that the information be available for review by the Environmental Advisory Committee by Q4, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Counsel Jolly, you have another one?
I've got several questions and a couple IRs.
Okay, go whatever order you want.
Sure. So my first question is from Mr. LaFleur. So I'm looking to know what the status of the bylaw regarding parental leave for members of council is. That was, I think we directed that in December of last year.
So through the chair, a bylaw meeting that description has been on the books for three years. It went to, then it was known as the Governance Priorities and Finance Committee back in two thousand eighteen, I believe, or maybe nineteen. But in any event, that committee referred it to the Task Force on Counsel Remuneration. And as I think you would know through Counsel Jolly, I think it was you insisted that when a new bylaw came in to create a committee to replace the old task force, you made sure to move an amendment that was supported by councils so that they would look at parental you made sure to move an amendment that was supported by councils so that they would look at parental leave as part of their mandate. So the bylaw is ready to go presumably pursuant to that original motion. It should be referred to the new committee when it's up and running. And my understanding is that plans are in, under, in the works now to do recruitment to get a committee appointed sometime this fall. And then the plan would be, unless council directs otherwise, the plan would be to take the bylaw that we have, refer it to them as part of their overall work. We were, I'll only add one other thing. We're aware that one of the main drivers, if you will, for a parental leave bylaw is to be sure that people who are considering, we're not on council now, but are considering running for council, are aware that this is available to them. We want to make sure that no one feels like they can't run for council because they're looking at maybe having a child. That's not, that's not appropriate. We want everyone who wants to run to feel like they can run, even if they intend to get to have a child. So that being the case, since it would apply primarily to, you know, potentially new council members, our feeling was there was no rush to get it going. We could refer it to the Council Remuneration Committee because that's part of their mandate now. So that's really what the timeline is. If council wants to avoid that referral to the new committee, the Remuneration Committee, and just deal with that bylaw right now, we can, you know, the agenda planning process can put it on any council agenda anytime because it's ready to go.
I'm just concerned because the motion that we passed in December didn't reference the Remuneration Committee.
The motion, yes, the motion did not specifically say, give a timeline for bringing it forward. What we had to do, we had to balance that motion against a previous motion to refer it to the remuneration. At that time, it was called a task force. So we had to figure, okay, now what? What's the best way to be sure that the intent of both of those motions is met? And at this point, the intent, again, subject to council giving new direction, it's, council's the boss, right? If council wants to see this bylaw, parental leave bylaw, you know, within the next one or two council meetings, that can easily be done because we have it. Our intent was to try to balance that with a previous direction to refer it to whatever group is determining council remuneration, the more so because that group that is now calling it a committee, not a task force, has a specific mandate to take parental leave into account in determining recommendations about remuneration. So it's, it's not, it's not critical to refer it to that committee. We were just trying to balance two different directions of council that are not inconsistent, but trying to make sure that they were both respected.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess, you know, my follow-up question. So the Remuneration Committee, so we're doing recruitment for the fall, so that means it's not getting done this year. But is that, am I understanding that correct?
Thank you, Council Jolly, your worship, to the mayor. We're starting, so basically you will probably be having postings out next week for recruitment. I do have the ability, or the CA will have the ability to appoint. However, for transparency, we will invite people to apply as well. So the intent will be is once we have a roster selected and go through that process, we'd probably be looking at the summer. And so we'd probably be looking at early fall, those meetings will start. So it's all depends on how they get through the information, how available they are. But the intent would be is that this would be a heavy workload for the fall.
Okay, thank you. My third question is an easy one. What's the status of the disc golf course in Kingswood?
Through the chair to Council Jolly, it has been tendered, I believe, and they are looking to make sure that the course is complete this season. Danielle Puplovely is on the line, I believe, as well, if she has any more details she'd like to share.
For that, Ms. Anger, through the chair to Council Jolly, we are currently in design on the course and we are tendered out for the project, so it should be up and running before the fall hits. So we're all up and running for the end of the season. Probably won't get a lot of golf play in this year, but the intent is to have it up and ready by the end of the season.
That's great. Thank you. And then I've got my IR. So Mayor Heron, thank you for reading that one in the other week. And then the other two, the one about the projector, that still needs to be read in. Is that, does anyone know on ledge?
I can't remember if you read it or not.
I don't either.
Read it in now.
Okay, so what would be the cost to have a permanent means to project on the big wall around the Ardeness on St. Albert Place? So I'm thinking a high-quality outdoor projector. Just looking for options, day or night. And then the other one is about community gardens. So the first part of that is which city-owned lands would be appropriate for community gardens? What would be involved in creating a streamlined process to allow groups to use city-owned sites for creating community gardens? And could transportation rights of way be used on a temporary basis for community garden uses? And I included some information about Christ Church's Park that they've kind of used. It's used for both forestry and recreation uses in my IR. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I can't remember if they were in the IR tracking, so good to just read them in. I did play disc golf up in Grand Prairie. It was fun. They have an amazing, well, the one I played was amazing, but they have three up there. But it goes all through the River Valley, so I don't know if, has ours been designed yet?
To the mayor, it is in design right now. And we've identified Kingswood Parks. We're trying to provide some varied terrain, but we are limited within the scope of the park.
So you can't go into the trees along the river?
We're trying to make it as close as we can with some varied terrain. Just it's, we're so limited again with how far we can go into the trees there.
Okay, yeah, I guess when Riverlot 56 probably isn't going to allow it to come through there.
That was our first choice, actually, and it wasn't acceptable.
Well, field trip up to Grand Prairie. Anyone else? Council Kilik?
Yes, I have a question. It was, I sent it into administration just to give them a heads up. So a general question with regard to sidewalk repairs that are currently going or underway. The, I noticed in the project charter, it says that we complete 3,000 sidewalk grinding to smooth out trip hazards that are 15 millimeters, which is more than half an inch. In my particular neighborhood and walk-around sidewalks, it seems that the milling process has been taken or undertaken under much smaller trip hazards, less, far less than a quarter of an inch. And so my question is, what's the process to identify what is a trip hazard and what is our definition of a trip hazard that we would send out to a contractor and then within that budget, I think it's 600,000 a year for both sidewalk replacements and milling. So just my own observation that we have done a lot of milling and of little, little teeny trip hazards, if you will, that are significantly less than a quarter of an inch. And I'm just wondering if, what the process is, how do we manage, how do we define them and and actually pick those sites to do any work?
Your worship, and to Council Kilik, we have Donnie George on the line.
I'm here as well as Dean is here. So I think 12.5 mil is the criteria that we use. Maybe 15 has been used in the past. Dean, if you want to elaborate on that.
Thank you, Donnie. And that's exactly it. So 12.5 millimeter or greater is what we shoot to achieve for addressing within the network. It's a multi-year program that we have with the contractor and a three-year program and previous, I guess, inspections identified approximately 9,600 trip hazards meeting that criteria. And so that range of that, you know, just around 3,000 slightly plus is what's targeted through the three-year program to try and address throughout the city. And yeah, that height again is that half inch, I believe, is what the 12.5 mil is what we look to address.
So question is, how do we, how do we actually determine that? Because as I said, I've walked around my neighborhood and they were significantly less than the half inch that we're seeing is supposed to be our criteria. I'm just wondering if, like, who goes out and checks those little green dots or how do they get established? Or are we spending money on a contract that we could use those dollars somewhere else? You can take that offline if it's better to take offline. I could take, show you some pictures. But it really, we were looking at things that were under, well under a quarter of an inch and just did not seem to be meet our criteria of a trip hazard.
Thank you, Council Kilik. So we can definitely investigate. If you have some examples, we can go out. We work through our CPO group, our capital projects group, to help deliver the program. Typically, it's a joint kind of inspections between the project manager and the contractor on site. If there's any questions or anything like that relevant to the site or if a location should or should not be done. There may be conditions to which are these linear cracking or deviations or whatnot. It may be a portion thereof, like I have to see a site and probably reference that. I've heard for the best example, but I could say that maybe along the linear crack, there was an area that was, you know, higher, like that criteria and then a lower area that kind of leveled off. And when they go out and mill areas, what they are ultimately doing is there's, they follow suit in regards to the Canadian Disabilities Act in regards to a barrier-free design and the slope of the sidewalk. So as they, as they mill it out, they also address kind of a slope and whatnot as well. So when you look at that full crack, it may be very minimal. And then, but there may have been a worst point that they actually found out and addressed. Without seeing it, I would be a little bit, you know, ill-advised to be making assumptions or whatnot from what was done, but we can definitely investigate and have discussion with contractor and our CPO group as well and just confirm what those criteria, that the criteria we've established are being achieved.
Thank you. I'll send some email through through carryover to get you the information as requested there. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Awesome. Thank you all for using this piece of time to actually get some of the questions out. That avoids the IRs and good stuff. So I don't see anyone signaling me to make a motion or to do a notice motion or an IR or any more questions. So I'm going to move on to in camera. So I need a motion to go into camera for 15.1, which is our human resources annual report. Council Broadhead, oh, Council Kilik pushed the button. Go ahead, Council Kilik.
I'm so excited. I like pushed the button and then Wes raises his hand. He's like, like we're in a Dutch auction bidding war here. That council move in camera to discuss the matter pursuant to section 24.1A and 24.1D of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Thank you for that. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. All right, we will meet in council lounge.